All right, I'll call the May tenth, two thousand sixteen, the meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, can we just slide him around? You see good Kevin?
Yep, I'm good.
All right.
Okay, we have some adjustments to the agenda. Under new business, nine point eight will be to vote on the articles that are going to be on the warrant for the June town meeting. Nine point nine will be an update on the Odyssey of the Mind. And nine point ten will be adoption of the calendar for the sixteen seventeen school year. And another adjustment will be, number twelve will be executive session as per one M R S A four oh five six A personnel. And then...
Well, that's number ten.
Yeah, but this is a different one.
Oh, okay.
And then thirteen will be the adjournment. I'll just move down to thirteen. Anybody else have any adjustments?
I have two potential.
Pardon me?
I might have two. The one you just added for the articles for the June meeting, is that, I wanted to do a foreign language, the foreign language update, is that going to be covered there?
That has to do with allowing us to transfer a certain amount of dollars for the foreign language program. And then the other one is for putting money back in for tax relief for the town.
Okay, so that I didn't see the foreign language in the agenda, so that's great. And can you add a six point two? Just want to talk a little bit, I got a couple things just to share, talk about in regards to the goals.
Six point two?
Yeah.
Okay, just goals, right?
Yeah, strategic goals, next steps. Thanks, Judy.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. You good now? Comments from the public? Yes?
I have something.
Okay?
Well, you too, but I'm commenting in a public way. I just wanted to update you guys on some of the grants that I've been working on. I don't know if Mike, I have some pictures that I sent to Mike, he's going to try to put them up. One of them was from Scholastic, and you know how we have the Read Dogs program? So I'm writing a grant to try to get five stuffed dogs that are life-size, real-looking for kids to read to on the days when Livy and Chief aren't here, and also for kids who might be afraid of dogs. So that's not going to be a picture. I also applied to BJ's to see if they'll adopt us to help support our backpack program, our food program that we already have. They will give us a membership, which will allow the person who shop into that to get a discount and get bigger bulk items. I also applied to have our break room made over from Staples. We'll see if that works. It's a forty thousand dollar break room makeover.
Whoa, sounds good.
I think it's not copy. And so, the other one I'm working on, I'm trying to get some large musical outdoor equipment installed into the ground. Can you show the pictures that I sent first, Mike?
You want to make your presentation right there.
You're making your presentation?
Yes.
So, one of the grants I applied for was to this organization called the Awesome Foundation. Basically, you can ask for a thousand dollars for anything you want. I'm not technically supposed to share till June twentieth whether I got it or not, but they can allow me to show that little, we've got something exciting to announce. And so potentially, that's what I might have asked for, is a pair of outdoor comga drums. So I also applied to the Stephen King and Tabitha King Grant Foundation to get the rest of the outdoor musical equipment. And my goal in this was to make it a more, this is a set of hand pipes, kids can play with their hands, to make it a more inclusive playground for special ed and regular kids to not just play alongside each other, but actually play together. And it's something that everybody likes and everybody can do. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but we do have a student at the school who's visually impaired. So my thought is that the outdoor musical equipment could help him to know where the kids are on the playground and where he is, you know, and kind of give some more auditory clues. And just to change it up, I think the kids are a little bored with what's out there. It's been a really long time. So that one, I shouldn't hear back, and it was due June thirtieth, I already sent it in, but I probably won't hear back till much later in the summer whether or not we got that. But fingers crossed. So, the last grant I wanted to tell you about that I'm working on is for the Vex Robotics Kits, for the project Lead the Way into the New Curriculum. And I don't know, you probably know that this week, a lot of the teachers, last week, went to a training about it, and they had sent a whole bunch of different emails back after talking about how amazing it was and inspiring. Mr. Corey said, one of the teachers said, "Just let go and the kids will figure it out and control the learning," which I thought was really great. And I'm personally excited about that because I have a student assigned who's really, really gifted in science and really loves it. And some of the things about PLTW that I'm excited about are that it's okay to take risks and make mistakes. Teachers and students going together, and there's a lot of flexibility. Teachers can introduce the modules when they want, you know, however they want. And that it's innovative and it's project-based, it's hands-on. And I think that really helps to engage those kids that maybe don't learn from a book quite as well. And I think the popularity of our after-school robotics program, it kind of shows that kids are interested. I just wanted to say that.
So that grant that you put in for, for that particular program?
Yep.
Did you put, who did you put that into?
It's an organization called Keppware Technologies in Portland. A friend of a friend's nephew works there, and she told me about it. They have a ten thousand dollar grant. So I actually applied for the robotics kits and also to offset some of our professional development costs as well. And I should hear back June second for that one.
If I could sum up, she's just not going to take no on anybody's denial on any particular grant. She just realizes it's a matter of continuing to knock on doors.
Well, I'm starting to feel a little let down because you apply for so many, you don't get some, but...
You don't know unless you apply.
I think there's some good news coming up.
Go get them.
So, I say yay for you taking that grant writing course.
Thank you.
Can I jump in real quick?
Absolutely.
Oh, good light. Listening to Eileen, that stuff sounds excellent, and I think it's going to bear fruit. I think usually it's like ten to fifteen percent of grants you receive, so it's going to be, you know, a bunch of misses before something comes in, but we're going to get something, I have no doubt, soon. So that's awesome. I heard something recently about Amazon has a fundraising sort of component where if you sign up, that if people are shopping on Amazon, if you have an account, basically, you go into, if it would be the school one or what have you, you could do your typical Amazon shopping, but then a percentage of proceeds goes to whatever the organization is. I don't know, I haven't looked it up, but I was just hearing about it on a podcast recently, so I don't know if that's something for schools. It's kind of like, I think, the box house program, or basically, people just shopping, it doesn't cost anymore, but if they go through that portal of Amazon, then it could be a constant fundraiser. So, I don't know, that's worth looking into.
Kind of like the...
It's Amazon smiles, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you have to, you can designate who you want the money to go to, and I think the Acton Library might have done it already, but when you go to shop on Amazon, you actually have to go to that website first, you have to have that smiles in there. It explains it on the website, but the school would have to set theirs up if they wanted to have one.
So does the library have one of those set up already?
No.
The town library.
Oh, the town library.
Yeah.
Target also has their red card.
Target does, right. And then Hannaford has something too.
Hannaford helps schools, we get a check every year from them if people have deposited their designated receipts into the Acton Choice. Every little bit helps.
Yeah, and a lot of people shop on Amazon, I know I do, so...
I just looked it up, Kevin, you have to be a five oh one C three, which I was actually looking into.
Schools usually fall underneath that jurisdiction.
Oh, they do?
I believe.
I'll have to look into it.
Okay, any more comments from the public? All right then, let's move on to number three, recognition. And I see Lori Fekto's name there.
Yes, Lori Fekto has been working for Acton School for sixteen years. And I know a lot of times in our conversations at the school board level, we talk about the ed techs. But it's sometimes hard to imagine what is it that they do or could do in any given year, depending on the group, or even an individual student. So I wanted to give you a little history, you know, that Lori has sought to grow as an ed tech and has done things specific to the student needs that are under her care right now and have been in the past. So like the Spire Training, taking a course on calming the overactive brain, understanding executive dysfunction and how to help the disorganized child. Many work, many of Lori's work has been around autistic children in the lower grades. So she's a train, she has been trained in autism and Asperger's Syndrome, going to conferences. She has learned how to do the LIPS program, and it's the Lindemood Phrenemic Sequencing for Phrenemic Awareness and Reading and Spelling. And currently, she is taking on a new endeavor in anticipation of a student's needs, and I would like Lori to talk about that.
I'm currently learning Braille so that I can do one-on-one teaching with our student that is sight impaired. He has a teacher, I'm working with her, learning Braille through her, but also through the Hadley Institute for the Blind. I've taken a course through them on the new U E D, U E B, excuse me, Unified English Braille, which the majority of the English-speaking people of the world utilize. And after that course, I'll be taking a course on directly learning how to teach a student, and also on tactile, I'll be taking a class on tactile learning because you'd be amazed how difficult it is to read those little dots, and I want to learn how to do it too, instead of just looking at them. You can see them, but I want to be able to experience what he's experiencing.
Anything else to share?
Well, actually, I'm doing other stuff here too this year.
Go right ahead.
I'm doing the Old Sea Culkin Writing Program, and actually, this is a pitch for education people because although I've had immense help from Mrs. Damaris and other people, it would have been nice to have the training along with the teachers. And I think that ed techs need a little more training along, you know, anytime we have a big program like that, I think we should all be cross-trained because you never know. I could get hit by a bus tomorrow. Sorry.
Not a school bus, an Acton school.
It's true though, because we all need to be trained because you never know what tomorrow brings, and every professional is expected to support all of these programs, but we don't always get all the necessary training we need. So that's my push.
And Lori is just one more example of an educator who has gone beyond the minimum, beyond the expectations, beyond the list, to make sure the needs of our students, as they are changing, continue to be met. And I just want to appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so, for people who think ed techs just make copies and do things in the break rooms and whatever, this is a perfect example for people to understand that ed techs are educational technicians and that they do assist in all of the programs that have been implemented. And I think your point is very well taken, Lori, about training, professional development for the ed techs as well.
It would be very helpful.
Thank you very much for all you do and all you've done. And will do.
They're going to drag me out here kicking his head in.
Okay, we're all set now to go on to number four, which is a consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Well, I might need a change in the minutes, so do I still consent the agenda?
Just pull the minutes out. We consent on everything but the minutes.
Okay.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, we'll do that later.
You can do that.
So we're taking out the monthly meetings?
The minutes from April?
April twelve?
Yeah, yeah, April twelve.
Okay, so then I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of the school committee monthly meeting of April twelve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
And what you do is you just move that to like five point two, to address just a minute.
Okay, now if you have questions on any of the administrative reports?
Have you done a motion to accept? All voted?
Oh, did we both? I don't remember raising my hand.
You did, you did.
Okay.
Moving on to the chair reports, if you have questions about any of the administrative reports, now's your time to bring those up. You said you had one?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Gilby for them remembering the Titanic in the classroom.
It was amazing.
I mean, my goodness, you know, does anybody know what happened?
Did you?
Mary's soul remembers.
You didn't happen to peek into her room, was it last Thursday?
No, that's when, yeah, no.
It was amazing.
Yeah, I'm just reading this, yeah, yeah.
The parents helped her put on a ten-course meal that imitated a meal from the Titanic.
I think she posted something on her blog.
Yeah, the directions are in my report as to how to get to her Slide Chastity.
And the other thing was about the preschool and kindergarten parenting, how many preschool people showed up, or how many do you anticipate?
We had a full room here. We are now up to, oh yeah, Mary, your numbers are wrong.
First it went to what?
Drum roll.
I wrote it down. We are up to nineteen on the pre-K list and thirty-five on the kindergarten list. At that point, that puts eight new students in kindergarten. And of course, nineteen, only of two who are boys. Seventeen girls and two boys.
You can have a basketball team that way.
On the pre-K list.
And what, I'm sorry, what was the kindergarten count again?
Thirty-five anticipated at this point. And eight of them will be new, had not attended preschool yet. Seventeen to two, how bizarre.
Seventeen girls, two boys, those lucky boys.
So, we had an excellent turnout by the parents. What we did for preschool and kindergarten night is we had them all together here at first, talked about all the things that meant something to everybody, and then what we did is divide, and parents who had students going into pre-K for next year stayed in this room to talk to Heather and to Shannon. And then Sylvia went into the library for those with kids going into the kindergarten. So they got a lot of individual attention on their specific needs, but also got the group information. We do have a step-up day on May twenty-seventh, and that means both pre-K and incoming kindergarten, incoming pre-K, incoming kindergarten, will get a chance to ride the bus. And again, tour of the school, and so, and we got screening planned coming up in the next week as well. A lot of students will not require screening because the pre-K, most of them got it done, but again, we have a list of those who have not been screened, and so whether they're going into pre-K or kindergarten, we need that information.
Any other questions? I'd like to make an update tomorrow.
Well, I'm just going to ask about the concrete sidewalks. I know they're broken through the summer, is there some cement you can mix up? I figured you were going to do that, I just think, wait for school to get out, just kind of...
That will be done long before school gets out.
Oh, okay, because it's kind of rolly. You know, if you step in the wrong place, you roll, you roll, so I try to avoid that.
I was wondering if we had the spring book fair results, that was something you said you might have.
Yeah, Jen again did the BOGO, the buy one, get one. We had a good turnout. Jen, you have fantastic turnout. The total is approximately two thousand five hundred, a little bit, you know, just shy of twenty-six hundred dollars. And because we were on the upper end, we were able to get a little bit of money to shop for the school, so just shy of three hundred dollars to shop for the school, which is unusual for a BOGO. It was good.
And just a question for Kim, do you foresee any problems now that we're, May, whatever we are here? Do you see any problems with line items slash accounts?
No, I mean, ones that are kind of, you know, really close, I work with the administrators and as we're, I'm going to use you as an example of any.
Use me.
You know, it's like, the warrant gets done and finalized everything that was paid for, and I really look at the reports, and then I sit down with Andy, like we did yesterday, and said, okay, you know, this is what we have left, so this is our target, and we, you know, we're ultimately trying to stay right within our budget without having to move anything at this point.
Very good.
I have one with special ed with Nicole. There's some supplies needed for a particular student that's kind of expensive, and I'm trying to wait as long as I can, you know, I'm going to try to get it in this year, but it all just depends on, you know, how the next two months go.
Yeah, I know, there's a lot that comes up now.
If it goes well, then I'll be able to get the supplies that this one particular student needs.
And we're still going to be able to, to turn back to the town what we promised that we would?
Yeah. I did have to, because the Warren and Finance Committee, they were looking for a specific number, and I'm like, I can't give you a specific number because I have to wait till the end of the year. So, working with Michelle, we reworded the article to just say that follows Acton's fund balance policy, you know, that's, so that way, it's basically a yes or no statement, and then at the town meeting, you will supply them with the amount.
Which is just next to it.
No, it's June twelve.
June twelve.
That's all my questions.
Kevin, you have anything?
Yeah, I think I got three short ones. One is not a question, but a thank you. The, I saw, I forget whose it was, I think it was in Bob's, that the students who presented last time received certificates. I thought that was awesome, and I think that's a good idea for it to be common practice moving forward, whenever students present to the school board, so thank you for doing that, I think that was awesome. One for Andy, I saw the water, the water was tested, do we have the results?
No, it's just a quarterly test.
Oh, okay.
Usually takes two or three weeks before we get the results back.
Gotcha. And I think, maybe it's coming up later, but there was multiple references to the need for a refresh for technology with the laptops, is that coming up later?
Yes.
Okay, so I won't ask that question now, because I guess it will be answered. Recommendation for Nicole, is she here?
No, she's at a conference in Rhode Island.
That's right. Just maybe if you can send her a note, I'm thinking the special education data that she shares with us and the numbers, I think it'll be helpful if we can keep a historical record in her reports so that we can see previous months.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Because then we can see, what's, I think, the most interesting piece of news is the changes, but when we just get the one month at a time, it's hard to see sort of, to compare apples to apples because we can't see that. So that's just a minor thing, maybe each month, for each year, maybe each month progressively, she just keeps adding a new column that we can look at the historical data. So really minor. And, quick question, I saw that the portal was being piloted from Master Connect by a couple grades, what grade levels would that be?
We have the teacher, did you hear that?
First grade?
First. First, go ahead, speak to it, either one of you.
Speak.
Got to remember the different ones.
Particular staff members were given access, Eileen for one.
As a parent.
As a parent, Judy Crawford was a mother, I believe.
Suati.
Suati, and Patty Damaris is first grade, half of them has received, I believe, access to it, and she can speak upon their statements.
I had feedback from one parent saying that she loves being able to go in, she'd already been able to get in through her daughters, because my kids can all access their trackers on their own now. And she enjoyed being able to go into it. I don't know what she sees, and I haven't talked with Mike yet about the whole logistics of how we can communicate with each other, but we're, I have five parents playing with it. One parent was having trouble, but she says she's technologically challenged, so she's going to have her husband check into it, so.
What's the next steps for the portal piece?
Excuse me?
What are the next steps for the parent portal?
In the next week or so, I'm going to open it up for the rest of my parents, I don't know about the rest of the school.
Yeah, that's our, that's our goal, is to do another round of phasing in, see how that goes. We haven't had a chance really to get much feedback.
And then September.
And then by, yeah, the fall, that it'll be full parental access.
So the goal is for all parents to have access to their students' records in the fall, all grade levels?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
I have an update on my report on CDS, Child Development Services.
Okay.
And I also have Kim speak to it too, because we worked it out together. Tag team with the head of the state on Child Development Service and also the head of pre-K. Basically, this came about of, oh, Tricia and you had a IEP meeting or something, and basically, Child Development Services are having a hard time finding people to provide OTPT and speech. Not that we use all three of those at any time, but those are the three people that they have a hard time employing. And an idea came out of there was, why can't we just use our own people? Well, it has to do with billing and all that. Long story short, after a whole bunch of back and forth, on Friday, was it Friday we did a collective call? Friday we did a collective call, and we got the paperwork, and you can speak to what's taking place now and how we're going to go forward. It's good news, right?
Right, it is. Basically, what Elizabeth did was she changed the paperwork, because their original contract, they were only going to pay like fourteen dollars and, you know, per hour, and it was really low. That's not our subcontractor rate. They matched our rates that we pay. And I've already talked with, like, mainly kids and Center for Communication, they're going to, any bills that they do that are kids-specific for CDS, they're going to bill me separate, and I will submit those bills in to CDS. They will pay the rates that we pay, and they put that in the contract.
And this is new for them.
This is really new.
And they're going to a new billing system that hasn't been quite finalized yet, but they said they go forward with us now, and by the end of next year, they'll have that system in place, but in the meantime, we're going to get to do this for at least these next two months.
Right, for this year.
This year and next year.
Yeah, for this year till the end of the year, they only want to do OT. They said they had somebody for speech at this point in time, but I think what it is, is they want to say, okay, well, we'll just try you with OT and see how it goes, and then next year, we'll do the full gamut of, you know, all of them, so.
So when you say next year, you mean starting in September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, starting in September.
When we're getting all, when we get all these new...
The new pre-K, the two nineteen, nineteen, all the girls?
Well, the good news too, is they'll have the same provider from pre-K right through, so the relationship will establish, which is really, and that's what they want, but they don't like to fund it.
Right.
But they're going to for us.
It's a smart move for them, it saves them from hiring one person to come out and do one or two kids, when we already have somebody doing three or four kids. And the more that we can provide services to these kids on a pre-K level...
The less we have.
The less we'll have to do later when they're older. If we end up waiting, we end up losing a lot, and especially when they're really early, you know, developmental stages, this is, it's really key, and it's just easier, and in the long run, it just makes financially a whole lot more sense.
And the complication of communicating and coordinating with them has been a thousand gray hairs worse than you could have imagined. And so, you know, they've got so much different government red tape and processes and procedures, it has made getting services so much more of a challenge. The other thing it does also establish, we're using one of ours, especially as an earlier connection to the... connection to the students, so there's not a changeover. They build that relationship once and it continues.
Makes sense.
And they have a shortage of people too, don't they?
It's because they have nineteen new programs in work.
Oh, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, so I mean, they don't, they can't, they know they can't service us well anyway, so.
Right, right, I mean, it's just, but, you know, they had, they have different hoops and different, different things that, you know, we as a public school, you know, it's all here, so, um, I know, I don't think they're, they don't think they've intentionally made it difficult, but just tracking each other down, getting people all around the table, I think at one point, we really did have about fourteen people around the table for one child to talk about starting services.
Yeah.
Just, it's just so much more complicated than the system we have in place here, it's just really better for kids.
See, Maine handles this different than most states, most states, this pre-K is underneath, Child Development Services underneath Department of Education, Maine it isn't, and that's where the problem came, and this is where, it was one of the situations where I thought it was gonna have to go through, I just laid the work, but, but, just keep.
So we have a contract, right?
Yep.
Yes, I, I, the contract is gone, it's in the mail. Signed, sealed, delivered, on, on, it's gone. But no, um, no, we did all the paperwork today, I emailed all the certs, I, everything that they needed, um, but it's actually gonna be a lot cleaner because they, I will only deal with Elizabeth and Elizabeth will only do it, so I don't have to deal with all these...
Elizabeth's the head of Child Development Services.
Oh.
She's the top dog.
So we're gonna try to keep it clean, quiet and, and the revenues we'll get back will be, uh, instead of waiting for a check, it's gonna be electronic, it's gonna be an ACH.
Good. Nice.
Which will also be a lot cleaner.
Cleaner, yeah.
Right. Okay, any other questions about any of the administrative reports? Questions or comments? No? Everybody all set? All right then, let's move on to five point two, which are the minutes.
Well, I just, on nine point seven, the foreign language discussion, I don't know if that's what the motion was, I don't know if it was coming from undesignated funds or, but, I mean, what happens is it doesn't mention anything about it being a warrant article and that's what I thought it was at, at the town meeting, it's not there.
That's what it's supposed to be, but that's how it was worded.
And, and, um, well, the other thing is that in order for us to move those funds forward, it has to be a town meeting article anyway, so, that's...
And that was passed favor by my, uh, financing warrant committee last night. It's clean.
Oh, you talked about it already.
Can move it out.
You talked about it already.
All right, I just wanna make sure, because I didn't see the town meeting.
No wording, is there a wording in the warrant?
She just said they read, with Michelle, you guys reworked the wording for that.
No, not for this one.
Not for this, not for the foreign language. The foreign language one, we followed the same, they, they had the language already, that one's already done, they, they've already got it at the town. And, um, they followed the same warrant language that you had for pre-K.
For last year.
Oh, oh, and the same amount of money.
Yep.
Pretty much, actually it is. Because it's a person, yeah. So, I think what you're saying, Mary, is that it should have been to, um, ask the town
Right.
For permission to move sixty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
From our undesignated fund for a full-time language teacher for the sixteen, seventeen year.
No, but Jen is saying that's what, how the motion went, so.
Right, we didn't really sit, um, we talked about it, but not much.
Right. I mean, basically, you guys are just saying, if, if the town approves it, that this is where the funds would come from.
Right.
Right?
But that doesn't say that in that one. I went back to watch the video, because I kind of freaked out about it, because I was like, wait a minute, this is, and, and Kim knows, I, I like worry about things. So I went back and I was like, wait a minute, I thought this was coming out of the, you know, going, going...
Well, it would come from the school, obviously.
But I thought that it was supposed to go to the motion first.
To go to the town meeting.
That's what I thought too, it's not there.
Well, it's in, it's in the warrant article, which we'll be approving later this meeting.
All right.
So, we should be all set on that.
All right, thank you.
So are you okay with the minutes as written?
Yeah.
And you need a motion to...
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April twelfth, as written.
Okay, moved by Mary, seconded by Kevin, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, moving on to number six, uh, progress monitoring reports, technology, six-one technology, Mr. Corey.
Three items.
I, I'm gonna cut it off.
Two point five.
Kim, can you speak with me? Kevin mentioned, there had, there is a refresh on the MLTI program.
Can you see that?
I am not, it's not looking right. Anyway, um, in 2012, Governor LaPage gave us, recommended a, uh, an MLTI RFP for the HP proposal, to use HP laptops, um, at two-hundred-and-fifty-something dollars per seat. We opted to stick with the, uh, Apple MacBooks, because that's what we're used to in our curriculum and our education practices. So in order to do that, we had to pay the offset, um, in comparison to the fifty-four, so, the MLTI off, uh, refresh is giving us the choice. They were given the opportunity to refresh because they recently released an iPad Pro and it's such a significant upgrade, I think, um, it gives the opportunity to utilize more technology resources, um, and it meets a stipulation that the, they, they needed to be required to meet in order to allow a refresh. The other option is our current one with better MacBooks. And with this, we get, um, a bunch of free resources, uh, cloud management, um, new Apple TVs, um, that are better, um, new servers and services that we can utilize. The opt-in is June first, the deadline for opt-in is June first, um, and August is the required date to ship everything out. But there's concern in, um, amongst districts, I've met with technology directors across York and Cumberland Counties and we are, um, a little concerned about how MLTI and what MLTI is doing for the deployment, uh, refresh strategy, so kind of holding off and waiting for the DOE and MLTI to, you know, make any final decisions. I should be meeting with the, uh, tech directors again, um, in the couple, in the coming weeks to, uh, discuss and, and get a more solidified, um, understanding of everybody's approach to this.
The, the, the contract is supposed to be for four years and most schools' systems have, some tends to have discussion right now, most school systems have their technology plan built on every four years buying the devices at the end of the plan. This refresh option takes that off the table, so it's really thrown a lot of schools into turmoil when they were planning, they've already budgeted, we had a budgeted for next year purchases and so, and so forth. And so it's really messing up a lot of people's technology plans and they could have a substantial dollar cost because the devices have to come back in working order as they define and they're having a third party make the decision of whether this device needs to be repaired or not and, and that's the part that's really throwing a lot of tech engineers, they don't know, where, where are we gonna get the money to repair the ones that are broken? And there's all kinds of speculation, I've heard at least probably five different people saying, oh, it's gonna probably be this way, it's gonna be probably this way, based on whatever experience. But the end, the main thing that drove this is Apple wrote, in this original deployment, they wrote a contract till twenty-twenty-four?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So this is actually like a, a very long, like a ten-year deal. Apple, as he said, with the iPads, a lot of districts went to the iPads and the iPads, they neglected to deliver the control device to the teacher, which allowed the teacher to control all the apps. This new software does two, this new iPad deployment, or this new iPad that just came out of the program, has two major features, one, it has the option now to control and two, it allows it not to be an individual device, I could have one device that four people could use and sign into the wrong instance of that device. The current one, it's yours, it's yours, it's yours, it's yours, so it, it limited. You guys had showed a MacBook before when you came and so, he, he is like pulling his hair out and so is every other tech director, because they're like, and they, initially, we were supposed to turn these devices in June first, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
And they at least moved that off to August fifteenth, because, you know, for PD and summers and all that stuff. So he's got a strategy, it's a moving target, but it's getting a little more solidified weekly.
Yeah.
I do know, you guys, the tech department, you're, as a collective, they may be writing something to appeal to them and so might superintendents regarding, look, you're, this is messing up our complete plan, we're gonna have to reevaluate all our tech plans, so it's still a moving target. I think, I think Acton though, is not gonna get hurt in the long run of this whole thing.
No, we, we were prepared, um, for that current deployment, um, and it will help support the refresh if we're required to do it. So, um, on top of that, I'm, also, you mentioned that you wanted us to reach out and look for competitive, uh, printer, copier service providers, so I did that. I don't have the exact numbers, um, but I did talk to BEU and we have a few options on the table. Um, first of all, we are able to piggyback off of Sanford's RFP, so we'll be utilizing their rates to purchase the units, um, and as their cost per page, which is half of what we pay right now. My objective or goal is to either maintain our current copiers in the teacher's room, it was discussed to, um, maybe move them outside of the teacher's room to make them accessible to students, um, and eliminate more classroom printers, um, that way decreasing cost per page expenses. And my other objective would be to, everybody's been asking for this, is to put a color copier in here in the library and eliminate the library printer and two computer lab printers. And that will also be a cost savings in cost per page.
What does that say?
He's coming back.
He's coming back.
So, um, those are my proposals. These are, these numbers aren't, I don't think these numbers are completely accurate, but this is a overview of the possible savings, so you have to weigh the pros and cons to having printers in the classroom versus sharing copiers, um, and again, I'm not a hundred percent sure that these numbers are completely accurate.
But the, but the end result is by piggybacking with part of a bigger district, you get a better price per page, so even if volume stayed exactly the same, they're...
Yeah, we're still saving there.
Makes sense.
And we also get, we also get a deal on the, uh, the device, the devices as well.
And BEU was the one that suggested it, right?
Yes, they were the one, they won the bid on Sanford, so they, um, recommended that we go this route. I, I, I don't know if we wanna take action now, because I have also reached out to our current vendor and asked them for a competitive bid, um, so, and I'm not a hundred percent sure of a third print service in the area.
Tell, tell them the length of the contract.
The lease will be five years as the current one has been, uh, the length of the contract can be whatever we want, um, and I'm not sure if we can get a deal, if we go three years versus annually, but, um...
That's with this company you're talking about.
Right, with BEU.
Right.
If you do a lease, can you get a buyout for one dollar at the end to own the machine?
Yeah, our current lease, I think, is just lease, like you would with purchasing a car from a lien holder, right?
Oh, yeah, but, no, 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 the schools, the school right now, it, it does have a lease, but it's not, it's a financing that was done through Anderson's Bank, so it's not technically a lease, it's just you finance...
Wherever you finance it from, yeah.
So that way, you're, because the lease is gonna be at a lot higher interest rate.
Right, yes.
So, you finance them, you know, they'll do us like as if we were a municipality or an education, which we are, but, um, but they'll go through a bank to do, to do the financing, so it's really not a lease.
But at the end of the lease, then you have the issue of service contracts and maintenance contracts.
Well, well, with the company, if we maintain the service contract, they do all the work, they supply us the printing toner, um, in our current situation, that's what they do as well.
Most schools have done that.
So, are you thinking that maybe we should just wait and make a decision on this on the June meeting, Mike?
Yeah, I wanna wait from our current vendor to see what, the thing is, is that if we do purchase three new devices, it's going to exceed the policy of, um, the five thousand dollar, so you would have to, I believe, um, I don't know what the term would be, but override.
Yeah, but can I just ask, the, um, you, you would get the Konica Minolta machine, correct?
Yeah.
What machine do you have right now, what are the, you know, the bigger machines, what are they?
They're the same, they're Konica Mineltas, but they're like a step down in, um, capacity, not by much, but, we could continue maintaining these Konicas that we currently have, they may have three more years, four more years in them.
Right.
And just get a color copier, like I said, we have choices on the table, we can start, you know, looking at it.
If we did that, would we still be able to piggyback on...
Buying the one color top, uh, copier?
Sign if it...
Yes, we'd be able to piggyback using the one color copier, um, and still maintain the, uh, the rates.
So we'd still be able to get the same rate on the black and white copiers, if we just buy a color copier?
No, 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 if we, if we just get the color copier versus three of them?
Mm-hmm.
Just one, we can still piggyback off of the, the Sanford.
Just for the color.
Just for the color.
Right.
Well, you should see definitely what the current vendor will do.
Yeah, I'm waiting for their proposal.
They're not gonna be happy.
I think it'd be good to have three, just so that you have really comparable bids and I'd like to see more data.
Yeah, make things more competitive and better. One more presentation, comments. The last one kind of plays off and is more of a next year initiative, the whole technology initiative factor, and especially moving with the Chromebook, um, in, in the classrooms. I gotta see my notes, because I have a lot of stuff written down. But my, with, through the MLTI program, I lost my mouse. We are given the opportunity to utilize a data mining tool, um, that lets us analyze where we are as far as our technology initiatives. I use this new feature that they included, all right, I'll try to wing it. So, uh, we, I sent out a, uh, a, a, a survey to the staff, teachers and students in seventh and eighth grade, um, and it targets these, uh, particular areas. And I feel, if you look at them, they kind of work their way down into the classroom, you start with access, we currently have one-to-one, um, the environment, the beliefs, the policies, the professional development to support the devices, uh, the mobility and the ability to use them off, off campus, at home, um, kind of feed into the next level of skills, um, of the students and teachers and then how they implement it in the classroom.
You talking about that specifically?
That's, that's where it's coming at the end, yes. So, real quick, this is our first, um, data gather.
No, I saw that somewhere.
Um, the point of proficiency is twenty, uh, ten-twenty-four, and as you can see, everything kind of feeds to the left, so you got the environment, the skills, the access, that should build the classroom circle up more. And as you see, as you move along the year, now we're at the end of the year in 2014, you have the ten forty-nine, and this is where we are now, um, for the ten ninety-four. Our access is almost full, our skills are pretty good, um, they can get better and our classroom is starting to fill up almost to fifty percent. And compared to the nation, we are leading, um, even in Maine, we are, we are ahead of the scale, uh, as far as all of these, um, data points as well. The access I mentioned, everybody's got one-to-one devices with the Chromebook initiative. The environment, the beliefs, the policy, the PD, this is where we focus strongly here, it will help feed the rest of the, uh, the data points and help, um, enrich the classroom. And this is what the teachers said they wanted to learn. And this is what the teachers said they wanted to learn, multimedia skills, online tools, professional software. Fundamental skills, which I feel is where we should start. Online collaboration, classroom management, those are all big ones. And then some others, informational management. This is what I'm proposing and I started it myself. I don't know exactly how we do this or how it's going to be, how it's going to unfold. But I recommend that next year or even over the summer, teachers start looking at becoming Google certified or at least go through the Google certification training. And maybe with the certification or evidence that they've done it, obtain CEUs or credits. That will help enhance productivity in the classroom, will help with classroom management. The other thing that's, I noticed is kind of lacking across the building is digital citizenship. But Jennifer has taken this on herself to pull together, well first let me look at, show the data. Teacher's knowledge of creating an online presence. As you can see, knowledge of legal use on, from web contents. It's not, this one's a scary one, cyberbullying. And online safety.
Do you have how many teachers actually replied to that and took this?
Uh, I, I do, I don't have it right in front of me, I can't do my notes. But yes.
But one of the major focuses in Jennifer's program is you're gonna make sure that digital citizenship is addressed. Sooner a younger age falls in the throop.
It goes through kindergarten to eighth grade, it's not, it does not include pre-test.
Right, using what is called Common Sense Media, it's a free online curriculum.
It's well established.
Actually, our current MLTI, well not previous MLTI director overseeing the entire DOE is now working for this company. Versus MLTI program. So Jennifer took it upon herself to teach this K to eight. And there's some examples of classroom, digital citizenship classroom lessons. I don't wanna go through it because it'll be very time consuming. But it's, it shows you what a lesson or a module or module is or looks like in the classroom. And most schools are doing this with the library media specialists, they're utilizing them to help strengthen and teach this program. But my, this is another thing, I haven't quite solidified as far as the path. But overall thought is that next year, hopefully Jennifer and Gail can collaborate monthly perhaps with the teachers and the cohorts to explain what they're teaching and in turn get feedback from the teachers about their teaching. And let the teachers understand this stuff, so they can also bring it into their classroom as well. There is, there is a digital citizenship certification, much like Google. So perhaps looking at that as another CEU option.
Yeah, this wouldn't take very long for teachers to accomplish. And you can issue through CEUs.
Does it cost anything to take the test?
No, no.
This one, there is an application, they, I think they made it a little more complex to be certified, completely certified. The Google one is like ten bucks for the first certification and twenty-five for the second certification. And this one, the individual teacher has a lot of evidence to show, but there is no dollar value to be certified, officially certified.
As long as they make it part of their renewal for certificate, for state certification. Kill two birds with one stone, three really, because they're helping kids in the process.
For this particular one, it builds on each other each year. So you have a unit per grade. And it's divvied up basically like our cohorts are. So it's K two, three, five and six, eight, and then it is a unit for each. But what you do in kindergarten, then in first grade, it kind of piggybacks on that, but then it's a little bit more in depth and it goes right through to eighth grade.
So this is something that would take place in the library when the kids come in, like their, that classroom time would be?
Correct.
To get this digital citizenship.
Correct, that's what I have done. Anytime you wanna, if you guys were interested in even looking at it, in the back, behind my circulation desk are, are the three binders. All the information is in them, it's easy, accessible for anybody to come in and look at and see what's happening at any time during Common Sense Media.
And the other thing that Common Sense Media does is it ties in, remember which one it was. The lessons tie into cross-curriculum commons, Common Core standards, the next gen standards. So can't really see it, but.
Well, it lists all the standards that you will use, right? And it has them in each of the units, so every lesson that you teach, it will list all the standards that you're using to teach that particular lesson.
So she'd be in Mastery Connect, she'd make a tracker that lists these things and she'd indicate and check these out.
I had everything in Mastery Connect, but I deleted it all because you said that it, it wasn't giving the accurate data. So I deleted everything.
You didn't have to do that.
I did, I was like, I thought I was messing you up. One thing that, that can be passed on to us and we can put it in the tracker so that absolutely don't have to have. Because every student, I have them do a pre-test.
Right.
Take the unit and do, and do the end, the post-test.
I could work with her to build a curriculum, a library media.
Adrian, if she's doing a social studies activity that covers a standard that goes in our tracker, she gives us the stuff, blank one, so that we can upload it and we add, and we add the information, yeah. So that'd be less complicated that way for you.
Yep.
All set, Mike?
Exciting, exciting.
It's very exciting.
It looks like we're finally like not years back, you know, we're right there on the cutting edge.
Can I go back to the copier? The, the copier I am personally crazy excited about because I do want to make that back room a media center. And, and move the library out into the 21st century. And I just want to quickly show you an example of color copies and how important it is. In a huge lesson that I did with second grade, they actually made books. So that color copier and having it right here, so I went in and I said, okay, I'm working and teaching them how to, how to really design a book. They had to make the versa page themselves so that they knew, okay, what parts do I need, who am I dedicating it to? All that, that information and then making them and they did poetry, so they did it in the month of April. So I tied in poetry and senses, which they were doing in their class for science. So that color copier could really progress.
Over here?
Yeah, could really progress in what we're doing here in this space.
I don't think it comes to a hard school or binder.
Not necessarily the whole school, but I, me personally, I'm like crazy excited.
The copier also is like if I'm down the hall, I could print to that copier, correct?
Or anywhere in the building on the network. It'll have the features that the other copies do, stapling, hole punching, secure printing, I'm sure.
Nice. All set with technology with six one? Alright, let's go on to six two. And this is the goals, the strategic plan, next steps, something Kevin's up for.
Yeah, I just had a, I had a few things I wanted to add in here. So one is, can I have the request, I, I'm thinking if we could probably do it in, with an economy of space. But moving forward with the, since last budget, since last meeting we had last month, we clarified the goals for the strategic plan. Can we have those goals now be part of the, like we have at the, now on the agenda, the categories are there. But I'd like to be able to have the goals front and center for each of the board meetings, so if we can add those goals to the top.
The ones that are at the top of the page?
The goals are quite, the goals are quite long, so do you want to, just the titles?
I want the data front and center because I, I want, and I, I'm not sure the best way to put it, but I think that's where everything should be driving all of our conversations, to a large extent should be keeping those in mind. So I'd like them in some way front and center, the actual data, the goals and the targets we're shooting for. Because I think they easily, too easily get lost.
So you basically want the targets.
I've got a question.
Got it.
The other one, so can we add an, an agenda item for the June meeting? In this area to have, I believe Kim is working on this based upon her reports, is the baseline data for the NWA. Now that we've got the strategic goals, we've got NWA baseline data for reading, writing and science. We'll be able to look at those numbers to clarify those goals with some of the local data that we'll have. That make sense?
So what you're looking for is adding goals?
You want to know?
As we, as we look at the data, we're gonna be adding goals, where we're gonna go with those or?
Yeah, I would like to, so I'd like to do a report out on the base, the, the, the most current NWA data. For language, writing, reading and science, so that we can then look at the goals we establish. Because we established the goals last month without having any hard data in front of us.
Yep.
So that'll give us the most current data to see if we want to refine or clarify the goals with those local measures. Two, I was supposed to craft some language of intent for the goals, I have not done that yet. So I'm wanting to think, I forgot, I haven't forgotten, just haven't gotten to it yet. A question I do have, and I don't really know the exact question, but when the data is shared, I do have question regards to to what extent or what the plan will be in regards to the NWA data and any other data we have. How that is going to be used by cohorts to inform the PBL and, and that sort of stuff. So I guess my, my two questions as it relates to that is, what will the cohorts do with the NWA data? And two, how will they use the data to support the move forward with PBL next year? Because I think those are cohort level conversations. I just want to make sure that those conversations are had and that the cohorts have time to actually discuss, analyze and consider the data to inform their decision making. So maybe in June, if we could have a, a report out in regards to maybe sort of the plan, even early steps in regards to how those data will be used. I'm thinking that might be all I've got, any questions?
No, Kim understands what you want, she has it, so she'll have it there in June.
I can just tell you so far, what I've done is, is and I've worked a lot with Bob and put it together, it's, we're actually doing four data points, so we're doing fall, spring, fall, spring. So we're doing them by cohorts, by subject, so it's pretty much how we're doing it. The tests just went out, they'll come back. I have the template set up, so I just have to add on the net, the last number four. So that way you've got a good.
Trend.
You have a good trend of, of four data points to see how the kids doing really over two years, or the student. The questions that Kevin had brought up were questions that I, I had concerns with is, what are you gonna do with this data and what do you really want to come from it? So, but, but I think there's been a lot that's been done in that regard as well, so.
The main, the main thing, you gotta be careful with data and this is why she's gone to the four, four data points. Any one day a kid could have a bad day.
Right.
And so you need to look at it over time and then you have to take that final data point and you have to interpret that in, in context of the other three. So if the kid was at two twenty, two, two eighteen, two sixteen, and this last one is at two oh five, well clearly you were sick, you've done a bad day, whatever, you need to factor in. You generally don't go down in the, it's pretty hard to fake it up. In fact, it's pretty impossible to fake it up, but you can, you can tank yourself. So, and then from that, then you cross reference that to the norms for that grade level to see if the child is ahead or behind in terms of national norms related to that. And from that, that informs your instruction on how you might group or regroup or whatever for kids.
And to, and to make the connection explicit, so when we think about the moves we're making forward with proficiency-based learning, what the data provide us is, it gives us a sense, I mean granted, it's a, it's a local measure and it's limited to an extent, but it's good data. It lets us know basically where our students are proficiency-wise in some of the main areas, reading, writing, math and science. It's not everything, but it's important. So if teachers do have, with the PLCs that we have now and the extended release time, we have the capacity for the teachers to analyze the data to see where their students currently are with proficiency, so that they can then move forward to make decisions in regards to how they'll use their time and their schedule and inform their instructions so that the students are really struggling, what interventions need to be kicked in. The, the students are right on, what they're gonna continue to do to support that learning. But then the students who are advanced and are really sort of ahead of the game in regards to proficiency, what are we gonna do to keep them moving forward and growing and challenging them? You can't make those decisions without having those data. And teachers can't make those decisions if they don't have the time and the structure and the guidance to actually have those conversations in their time. So a lot of things now are coming into alignment with the PLCs, with the cohorts, with proficiency-based learning, with all these different pieces for it to actually have the capacity to use the data to make decisions. In many places, there just aren't all those pieces in place to really start using the data to drive learning and achievement. And we, we know the two kinds of conversations that teachers have that have the most direct impact on student learning and achievement are conversations around student work and student data and conversations at the level of designing or tuning actual lessons. It's the lesson level conversations and the data level conversations that have the greatest impact. So again, so for June, what the request will be is maybe between the next month or so, teams can have, maybe spend a little time thinking, looking at the data and thinking about what might be their plans moving forward, so. And I think that'll coalesce also with the, the conversation we'll have later in regards to the schedule.
Mike, do you know what to do?
That's all I got, thank you.
That's all you got?
No, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thanks.
Always good.
Alright, then let's move on to number seven, thank you Kevin, move on to number seven. Long range planning committee, you have a, a report in here, minutes of the long range planning committee.
That was the one of four twelve, we had that at the meeting before. But we do need to schedule another one. And I would suggest it not being on June, whatever, June twelve, I think, or next fourteen, June fourteen. Maybe we could do it before then because we're coming up, we've got some security stuff, we're coming pretty close to get finalizing. And so if you can.
Yeah, we'll set up a meeting.
About two weeks from now, within the next, about two weeks. First of, not next week, but the first of the following week would be great. Yes, yep.
We'll set that up.
Okay.
Okay. Policy committee?
We got June second, right?
Yes. Eight AM.
Unfinished business.
Nothing.
Okay, then let's move on to new business. Budget votes results?
Just state what it was, we stated it last time, but I'd already written this, begun this agenda.
Right.
It passed.
Yeah, we want to really thank the citizens of the community of Acton for continuing to support our schools by approving the budget at the last town meeting and also at the referendum. And also, we voted this year, the, the citizens of Acton voted this year to eliminate the second step of the voting process, which is the referendum vote, which will hopefully help people more, to come out more to town meeting, to our school town meeting or the town meeting that we have, whether we have it by ourselves or whether we have it with the rest of the department, whatever we do. But people will be better informed as to what the budget really is, contains. But mostly, we really want to say thank you to all the voters in the town of Acton for continuing to support the Acton school and, and the children of Acton and all the initiatives that we're trying to put in place here for all of our kids, thank you.
And then Judy, if I can jump into, the thanks to Bob and Kim, especially and staff and the rest of the committee and the one in finance in the town as well. I've been some conversations with. I've been some conversations with various local and nearby districts. And a lot of the nearby districts, they're not even close to being done with their budgets. So relatively speaking, we're done. It, it was, it went smoothly. And when I look at a lot of the others really struggling and trying to figure things out and not being done, I can't imagine that. So I just want to thank everybody involved in the process, particularly Bob and Kim for sort of guiding and leading that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's go on to nine two, students' share information.
You asked for some information, actually, through an email, I asked, what would you like on the possible agenda? You guys suggested some data from Sanford. And Eileen said she would gather that information because I'm not here all, and so she, she had to keep at them. And then she just got this like the day the packet went out. So I mean, and you want me to just read it so everybody knows it roughly? Or do you want to share it yourself or what? It's not as much information as I would like.
It's only six or seven things, read it.
Do you want to read it or not? One other question, how many students were at the start of the year and how many are there now? There were eighty-nine that started at Sanford High School beginning of the year and there are ninety-four as of today, or as of last Thursday. How many dropped out? Zero. How many have moved or how many moved? Eight moved to Acton and three moved from Acton. How many are on the honor roll or did make the top ten or top twenty? We had, the number ten person is from Acton and the number twenty person was from Acton for this year's graduating class.
Bob, I did notice though that there was no information regards to how many Acton kids got honor roll?
That's correct. Because they're, they haven't closed their grades yet for this next term. And that's what, I would surmise, that's where the person was thinking. Hasn't happened yet for this term.
That would make sense, like you mentioned.
How many invoke tech programs? There's twenty. And how many are in sports? This is pretty impressive. Forty-seven students participated in sports. I don't know if that is the same kid in fall, but forty-seven.
That's good, that's a lot.
And considering we barely have enough for a baseball team and we have no softball team.
So question in regards to this, when's the last time we met with Sanford?
It's been a couple of years anyway. It's been at least a couple of years. I think not last year, but the year before that, we were invited to their, to their, to their budget meeting where they were going over the budgets and what they were proposing for the high school and the vocational school. But that wasn't really a combined meeting with us. I don't think we've met with them as a, as a committee since Betsy retired from Sanford. So it's definitely.
From here, when she was here.
Yeah, when she was here, we went there during the afternoon one time. Remember, didn't it? I think you came.
But that wasn't.
That's at least three years ago.
It was in a closed room and it was something special. It wasn't a meeting.
Just to find out about our students.
Superintendent Therese has offered that he would come to a meeting for people. So maybe when the new person's in, you just do kind of a.
We used to have one joint meeting with the Sanford School Committee a year, where the two school committees met together. One year it would be in Sanford and the next year it would be here in Acton. So maybe we need to see if we can initiate something like that for the, maybe somewhere near the beginning of the school year.
October is a good month.
Is there anything in the contract with Sanford that stipulates any of these things?
No.
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 The contract is strictly.
Money.
Yeah, it's just right, it's bound to the tuition. Tuition and number of students percentage, and that's, that's all that's in there.
But the thing, it's like these school committee meetings, if you're sitting in the audience, it's pretty boring. And that's the way, well, it is. Can you, huh? No, I don't know.
No, it's very exciting.
Well, I tell you, and that's the way, I think that's the way, why it went by the wayside, because we sat through their whole school committee meetings and we were there like for three hours. Remember that, that the cow, I mean, it went on. We started right from the beginning, went through the whole thing, and we were just there. There was nothing.
Just three hours, that's shorter than ours.
I know, I know, they're doing well.
I know, but there was nothing.
But they meet more often than we do, too.
But there was nothing pertinent to, to us. We just went to the meeting.
Yeah, but now with the new high school, we need facts. We need to bring home the facts and know what's going on with the new high school.
Well, they're sticking their shovel on the ground this week.
See, I didn't know that.
You didn't know that? Go right down there, now you've got the facts.
Breaking ground.
Yep. They've got equipment.
I don't know, I forgot where I.
I'll see if I can set something up for us with, with Sanford for, I don't know, yeah, I think.
Hey, I'm just curious if there's some way we can have a little bit more communication and involvement?
Yep.
I don't know.
We can have a liaison.
We definitely can.
When's the, when's the contract up?
Kevin, you could be the liaison.
We signed a new contract, I think we've got seven more years on it.
It's a ten-year contract we've been doing.
Just, you guys, how many, how much do you think goes to them?
How much? She should know, she signs the checks.
How much money? Close to a million dollars.
Eleven, huh?
Oh, yeah, that's what our budget is.
Because it's per student and how many students go and.
See, we thought, the reason why I wanted to know how many are there now is because we, there was a drop. We thought we had more money now in that account and for high school students, for the tuition we pay. But now it's back up to ninety-four, so we don't have.
Originally, I had a hundred and seven, so we still have a little.
Gosh, a hundred and seven?
This is what's being returned.
Well, you, you've got to remember, when I had that number, it was in January of the year and a half.
I know.
So, I mean, I'm.
I know, that's what our numbers are.
Well, look at the kindergarten that's coming.
I know.
In the preschool, so.
Now we got the young ones and no old ones.
Okay, anything else on Sanford High Student Share Information?
That was it.
Okay, then let's move on to nine three, which is the second, second read of policy superintendent slash principal.
Yeah, you wanted the, the, no, where did it go? No, the line that you're adding, it's at the bottom.
We said something from the principal.
It's at page four, top of page four is underlined.
There's one place that underlined.
And top of page four, underlined.
Yep.
Yep.
I move to accept as it is.
Read it, read it out loud.
For the eyes, it just says, ensures that process is in place for the continuity of discipline consequence or plural when superintendent slash principal is absent from the building. And that is under the category of leadership capable to motivate, lead, guide, and direct people committed to implementing mission visions at the school department.
And.
I'll second it.
Did we have, there was something in here already? I haven't looked at it again.
Nothing's changed.
For a few days. Did we have something in here, though? I, I thought one of the things, I know we, we said we wanted to ensure that we had somebody, that, that they made sure that everything was under control. But weren't we going to add something about the fact that the superintendent principal was responsible for the discipline in the school?
Yeah, I thought that was there.
I thought that was something we were adding, because that, when it got transferred over. Where is it?
It's, it's in there where the, if they're away from the building, they'll make sure that those duties are addressed.
Right, right, I understand that, but what about?
Oh, you're saying, where are the duties that say discipline?
Where are the duties that say the principal is responsible ultimately for the discipline within the school?
It shows policies and procedures, school rules, prompt, safe, respectful, and healthy school environment. I think it falls under there.
I would think so, too. School rules. Right above it. School rules for safe and respectful and healthy school environment.
I mean.
If it doesn't clearly say what you think it might mean, somebody else could interpret it as something different.
Well, I don't know how you could interpret that being.
Superintendent's responsibility to make sure that's.
Ensures that policies, procedures, and school rules promote a safe, respectful, and healthy school environment.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I think that covers it, yeah.
I get it.
And if they have to make sure that there's discipline happening when they're not in the building, then that means that they're the. Ones doing it. Primarily in charge of it.
That's the second one down.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it's pretty clear.
All right, so Kevin, what did you say?
I move that we accept this for the second reading and we approve.
Adopt. Yep.
Adopt, W A.
I second it.
Mary seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I do it.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just, it's related. Now, now that we're approving this, what I'd like to do sooner than later is maybe on June or the July board meeting, we pull out the superintendent, we modify the evaluation instrument now that we've modified the job.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
So if we can add that to a future agenda.
Okay.
Now.
Makes sense. All right.
I was looking at this, we were looking, trying to remember to put everything that said superintendent, principal. And on the one from last month, here we had superintendent, principal. But here, on this one here that we're going to pass, the word just superintendent is there, principal is not there. Is that important?
Where are you?
Well, I'm looking at last month's. See, we had this superintendent, principal. And then, and here it just says superintendent, this new one.
No, I think we kept it that way for a reason.
See, on the.
Yeah, I see what you mean. You mean under performance responsibilities and criteria. On the first page, a criteria for performing a job responsibilities.
Is it anywhere else?
Of the superintendent slash principal include the ability to, right?
Yeah, so all those references should be changed to that.
Pardon me?
All the, all those references should be changed to superintendent slash principal.
Right.
Right, well, it's not on this one that we're passing now.
Okay, well, then we'll, we'll fix it.
Pass it with that correction and Eileen pulled up, must have, she's one of.
Okay, so then the motion is to accept file CBSP as a second reading with the insurance that all of the references refer to superintendent slash principal. Correct, Kevin?
You'll make that motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Did he have to rescind the first motion?
No.
And, and one other.
We didn't vote on.
One other thing.
Yeah?
Down, communication, we had communicate clearly with the school committee, staff, parents, and so on. Here, the school committee has been left out of that sentence. I don't know if that's important either, because.
She pulled up, I went out of Google Docs, it was the wrong one. And the only thing that needs to be added to the Google Doc, the one that you pulled up then was that line, that line. So I'm going to make sure it's still in there.
But the school committee is mentioned.
Because she said, which one is it?
Well.
It's one of those two.
Yeah, but it is mentioned in this corrected copy.
Last month, but it's not in this one. But it is mentioned in this one, the newer one, somewhere in here that it communicates with the school committee, staff, and parents. I didn't know if you wanted that in that paragraph or just.
Well, that's how we want it, what this one has, see? It already has a correction of superintendent, principal, and it already had.
It ain't there.
School committee. Yeah, but this, she took the wrong one and copied it.
In Google Docs, it will be, that was in the last next board picket with that one.
Kim took your calendar. Okay. See, that's your calendar. Right, so this is the one we need, the one that already had the little tiny corrections. Do you see how they're?
Yeah, right, this is the right, and she just.
Are you going to back to them now? She gave it back to you now.
From the word here in this, on the leadership.
Yep, and.
Unless I'm looking at the wrong one, I don't think so.
No, you're looking at the original.
Okay.
So.
So Eileen will fix that too, right? Is that what you're saying?
She pulled the original, two.
Yeah.
She, you know, on page seven of nine.
This is where we have to add.
Last month's, pull that one out and say that's the one.
Okay.
And I put key, so I'll do that.
On this one, this is the correct one. Ensures that a process is in place. Yep, I'll put dot, dot, dot. All right, so that's what needs to be done.
Yep.
One more.
Good catch, Jeanette.
Seven of nine. Let me see, on page seven, yeah. Let me see if I got that right.
No, no, it's not going to be there.
Well, then.
Huh?
It's because the wrong one was pulled up, Jeanette, so.
No, okay, okay, so that's not, so they're left even there.
Is the one she's going to get.
Forget this.
It's done.
So the other, the one that she printed this time, put, do not use.
The one, the one that we got, the one we got last month is going to be the one that will be finalized with that line put in about.
The one.
So we'll fold this one up.
And the date. Okay, so we've already voted on it, right?
Yes.
All right.
So we'll redo that, okay.
Okay, let's move on.
Schedule.
Schedule draft for sixteen.
Oh, schedule, I'm sorry, I just handed out this calendar. Could we just jump down to, where is it, nine, ten?
Yeah, we can jump down to the calendar, because we've just got it here, nine, eight, in, yep.
This one is, shows the teacher ones, not the one that, well, the teacher one has all the teacher workshop days and so forth. When the one that gets posted on the web, it will be minus, it won't say teacher draft, but it will have all these. See what says down the bottom, zero, teacher days, student days on each one.
Yeah.
Those won't be on the one that gets published on the web. But all the stuff on the right-hand side will be. It's the same one you looked at before. The reason it was held up was because collective bargaining, they wanted, they had a, they, they brought up an issue at our first meeting and so we said, Mary was present, says, we can just hold off. We're going to adopt this last time. And so we agreed to hold off. We met on this on last, when was it, Wednesday?
Monday? Oh, then we met Thursday.
Thursday, and it's cleared up, so it's ready to be adopted. It's identical, the, the early release days are similar to Sanford. The start date is a day, our kids start before Sanford. Excuse me, no, they don't start the same day. Our teachers start different than Sanford. And the end, we go two extra days until more than Sanford kids. They go one seventy-five, we go one seventy-seven.
Okay.
You guys need to go back to nine point three, because you did the motion, you did the second, but you did not vote.
I thought they did.
No.
No, I don't think we voted.
We did not vote.
Okay. Let's, let's go back to the policy CBSP. And the motion was to, to accept as a second reading and to adopt this policy with the change that it's going to always say superintendent slash principal all the way through.
So we're going to look at this again in June?
No, we're, we're adopting it.
Now we'll get a copy.
All in favor? Five and O, Jeff, thinking, okay. All right, now we're looking at the school calendar and I'll look for a motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar as distributed.
Somebody want to second the motion on the calendar?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on the calendar?
No, but what we always like to know is that we have the correct amount of student days, because something happened a while back. So if someone has a calculator.
In fact, we have. We have extra, we have, we have extra ones, actually, compared to, oh, beyond.
Anyway, we always have to bring that up.
Any further discussion? So we don't have to petition this thing. All those in favor?
That's all we needed.
I don't have it in front of me, so I have to abstain.
Abstain.
Okay.
Hold that up for me.
Four and one, here it is.
Can you just throw that over to him in an email?
He sent it to me later, but we're four, we're four zero, we're good.
All right.
Four and one abstain. Okay, now we'll go to the schedule draft for sixteen seventeen.
You were provided a copy in your, in your packet. She sent you, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And so I'll just pull one up on the screen here.
So can I ask a question at the outset or about, about this agenda item?
Yep.
My understanding too is just with the schedule, because I remember talking about this last year. My position, particularly as a school committee member, is we with last, last month, we were talking about with the strategic plan, we provided some sort of principles upon which we want the schedule to be based. However, when we talk about last year too, I don't see us as a committee sort of approving the schedule, just making sure it adheres to those principles.
No, we don't vote on it.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear in that, that we're not deciding the schedule.
Right.
We just wanna make sure that the, you know, the principles, particularly the.
The time is there.
Time for teachers to meet has been designed, I do believe it's the administration that decides the schedule.
Yes.
So, just to summarize it, you asked me, you tasked me to put together a draft, and at this point it becomes, I don't know whose, but, the, you're looking at your school board goals that you adopted just recently, there are five goals, number two is the most critical, it's providing time. Without number two, number one can't happen, three and four become more difficult, also five is security. So, without number two, providing time for basically cohorts to get together and meet, it's gonna be difficult to move forward with the PBL. So, to do this quickly, I'll go through this on the board, but also you have it in front of you. The six, seven, eight, basically, they have a, this initially started out with, a little bit with allied work, and even Colly had played around with a schedule, and the allied team were looking at possibly seeing if they could group kids differently. Instead of just having kids in seventh grade, they might have kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that are very strong in one particular area, and so they mix it up. We've had four meetings on that, and first one, they wanted to do it, second one, they started thinking about, it's gonna be a little more difficult in their thought, and because they really call the different standards at different gradities, and then, and they had second thoughts, and, and we talked and brainstormed, and then the most recent one, the idea may be that they'll look at throwing, they can take their, when I get to that, they can take their, their time when they have those kids, and maybe for six weeks, they do something that's that way, where kids are all intermixed, and then they do six weeks in which they're more like they have traditionally been. To do it all at once, they realized that was too much to bite off, so, there's a possibility next year, they're gonna look at doing a mix of things throughout the year, but they need time to work on that. And for that, they have their own PLCs behind to do that, so, which will be built in the schedule. So, in the six, eight, is basically, you're looking at instructional blocks, the white space here is for if they wanted to write notes and so forth. This is when the PLC will take place, notice it has five PLCs, and you'll see, I'll bring up their particular draft schedule, how can that be? Now, there's gonna be some tweaks that need to take place with any schedules, more eyes look at it, they'll find things. So, basically, they have one, two, three, four, five, six blocks during the day, of which one's PLC block, okay? In the three, five, this group, I met with each cohort and asked what they wanted to see in the schedule and create a list and so forth. They wanted to have, they were hoping to have their PLC time or prep, time, early in the morning. So, you'll see in this particular one, it's a prep, and because they wanted, in their schedule, they wanted the opportunity to, if they could put two blocks back to back and maybe do Lucy Cawkins for ninety minutes on one day, and maybe on another day in forty-five, I don't know. And by having them back to back this way, they have the potential to do that, so that's actually a forty-five or a ninety-minute potential block, okay? And then, in addition, there's this, this is what we're, the specials will call it flex period, that's where that idea of having intermix. And that may get straight, but this is also a PLC time, so these people could have five preps, two PLCs, or they could have three preps and four PLCs, depending on how you wanna cut it. But your goal was to have at least two hours of PLC per week per cohort. This is the way this cohort gets it. And the reason that they can get it here, and the K two can't get it like this, is because they actually start band at grade four, three. Three or four, Trish, band starts three or four.
Four.
So they're able to start that, and other kids may maybe take additional gym or something, okay? Now, on two, on K two, they had two options they wanted to pursue. And this is, this is another one where you might be able to do with maybe some gifted kids, but, they wanted to potentially have it at the end of the day. And Patty could speak to this in the past, why that worked, why you wanted it, but, so they wanted it at the end of the day, but that comes with some complications. Do you wanna take a second to speak to that? Have you guys asked for that?
We, we asked for that so that we can actually start meeting with the pre-K teachers, cause there's not a spot where we can meet with them where they're free, and we're free at the same time. So we figured if we started our meeting and got some things taken care of, then when the end of the day comes, pre-K can join us, and we continue our meeting, when we did, when we did, no, I can't remember, it's gone out of my head, or dance. Before, we would have, the specialists would have our kids right till the end of the day, then they would dismiss, and we could keep our meeting going until four o'clock in the afternoon, so we get a really big chunk of time. So that's why we kind of asked for that time, our glitch right there is actually dismissal of the kids. That, and that, you know, that's the only, the only problem we would have, we would have to make sure that someone was covering our classrooms, so that we could keep our meeting going.
We've done it successfully in the past.
Right, yep.
When you were in it, in that way.
But it required a tech support.
But you also have allied, they would be an ally, maybe the allied person walks them back or something, you know, just.
And they did that.
That's not, it's not. The other option was that they had talked about, this is the one you wanted.
Yes.
But I put down the other one, which was this one, which is have it directly after lunch, and there was some thought with pre-K, where kids are having their rest time, that that could bump up, but I think they prefer this option over that option, correct?
Yes.
And then, under, I'll skip spec, well, specials is kinda long, because I gave them a place where they could start writing in what they might do, you know, like this would say band, or chorus, or music, a gym, who they have and what they have. But, it's basically combining every one of these yellows you see on the other screens onto their schedule. But giving an example of one that kinda gets teased out, here's the pre-K, the beginning of the pre-K. Each of these white blocks will have to be spelled out exactly who's with what group, cause all the kids from the cohort go to the allies at once. They just have to decide which one's gonna happen where, okay? And, just draw, reference this, library, that probably should say, library media specialist, or something like that, and then, instead of saying Gail, it's gonna be called coding and computer, cause she's really, it's really shifting more into coding early on. I mean, the little bundles we're in, what's, what was it? Last week, pre-K kids reading here, you know, they could, they could figure it out, it was really crap. And then, under, do you wanna speak there?
Yeah, I didn't mention that, but that's definitely worth bringing up. Jennifer is doing the common sense media for digital citizenship awareness, but Gail also attended a coding.org workshop, and she has a curriculum mapped out for K A coding, so now, during the computer times, we're gonna be potentially, hopefully, doing a computer coding across the board.
And it's not, it's not, it's a thing, it's a way to think.
Critical thinking.
Yeah. And then, pre-K, basically, this was if it was to be after lunch, but, because it's not gonna happen, but this may end being, we're gonna have to provide some coverage so that they have some individual prep, okay? Now, the, the plan was to meet first with, met with the cohorts, heard their input, put it all down, looked at the commonalities. One of the common things that came across in all cohorts was, they really would like the allied time to be consistent. You know, it was same amount of time on the class for each content area. Allied had some difficulty with that, they think that you don't have maybe gym for thirty minutes for pre-K, whatever. They're gonna have to adjust for that, cause that's the only way that the cohorts are gonna have the opportunity to work.
Right.
PLC. That's one thing, and one of the major things in the three, five, and six, eight particularly, was the, they wanted to see band, chorus not pulled out of instructional block time with them. So, part of it's gonna be pulled out of the PLC, and then maybe some that has to be pulled out of the, cause they meet twice. I thought they only met once, but they meet twice, I just found that up today. And then, yesterday, I met with the six, eight, and gave them a rough schedule that, that would affect them, and this is hit right here. And they just looked at it, and I said I'd be showing you guys it tonight. And then, they're obviously gonna have to digest it so forth, but if you look at this, you'll see, see the yellow PLC block going across? And then you'll see, the main thing, it's kinda busy to see, but I'm just gonna summarize it. One of the things they wanted to do was in science, and David is here, and he can speak to that, they wanted to make, in science, you need to have eyes on smaller group of kids. So this is based off three instructional groups, a fifteen for sixth grade, twenty-three for seventh grade, and twenty-five for eighth grade, three groups, three preps, that's it. However, in science, they need to be broken up, because smaller groups in what they do, so, if you look on Monday, period one and period two, you'll see science lab A, science lab A. He has them for two blocks of time, so he can do a big long lab, okay? But that's only half the group of kids, the other half are in library. And then on Tuesday, you'll see science B, science B and the science A is in the library, or technology, depends which one you're. And then, the same thing happens in sixth and seventh and seventh, cause it's two seventh grade groups, there's only sixteen kids in sixth. The other thing that was suggested was the, you see the, the, I guess you call it flesh tone blocks?
Yeah.
Middle? This is an opportunity, you see it says seventh, and it has SS and yellow and yellow and SS? This is a chance where two teachers can interteach together, and same thing down on the, whatever that, twelve thirty block. But they, they have the opportunity.
Kind of like a humanities approach.
Pardon?
Kind of like humanities approach.
It could be, but it's really, it's their decision, I mean, this just provides the opportunity to do that. And if they massage this and move some things around, they could probably make more of these if they, if they so desired. And then, down at the very bottom, in the past, here's the issue, if you have four content specialists, and they hope to meet with people five days a week, if you multiplied out the periods, and you wanna give the lab situation, you can't do it all in the periods, the five periods above, and also provide PLC, okay? If you notice, in this particular schedule, they have five days of PLC, and they also have individual preps. So it's an opportunity to really move in a PBL direction with support and time, and as long as you got facilitator from instructional folks, they should help. Down on tutorial, there was, there had been some expression on the board regarding tutorial, and I, I shared with the group that maybe the board doesn't really totally understand what, how tutorial is used or worked, and that maybe they need to communicate that more with the board. But, if you'll notice that sixth grade has four tutorials. And that's the group that we need it the most, cause they just started working with this group of cohort. But notice in seventh, it gets cut back, and then eighth, it gets cut back more, so you're weaning them off getting ready for high school. Okay? So that's rough, that doesn't mean this is what it's gonna be, but it's, it's doable, it can be done.
What about foreign language?
That's, that's the.
It's not, it wasn't factored in, factored in, cause we had.
You hadn't even decided what grades, what, you know.
Right.
But it would factor into the PLC area, would factor into the allies, correct?
You could, I mean, you could take.
I mean, that would make most of.
Here's an example, you could take the, if you're gonna do it for the six, seven, eight, you could say, in allied time, sixth grade is mixed in with seventh grade, say for PE. So it frees up a period for the allied, for the other, or something like that. I don't, I don't know. Okay? Instructionally, instructionally, fifty, near fifty, as close to a sixty-hour block that you can get, the better it is instructional. When you start getting below fifty, forty-five-ish, you're in transition a lot, unless you have periods back to back. But with subject area specialists, that doesn't happen quite so often, where it could happen under the, you know, the lower cohorts where they're, cause that teacher's in total control of those kids for all content, okay?
And where does explore fit into this? In the allied block?
That, that would still have to pull out, like they've been doing, it's just not enough time. Something has to give, you only have so much time, either that, or you increase the number of periods in a day, which decreases the period, like, that's why I mentioned, having instruction close to sixteen.
Couldn't explore work within the, within the allied blocks?
Can I?
Yeah.
Could be created.
A lot of the times, when the student is going to explore, it's supplanting a specific subject.
Right.
So, for instance, like a literature circle group, so instead of being in their regular English language arts class, but that literature circle group, Adrian might have that group.
I see.
So it would have to match the core content that the student was getting, their needs met. Or, if it's whole class, then, you know, like somebody like Patty Demarest, she might have Adrian use one of her social studies blocks, and they would team teach a particular subject. So it wouldn't be in addition to, it would be rather.
A part of.
Part of, or instead of, okay?
You, you, you have that, you're trying to offer everything to everybody, but you don't have enough time to talk about.
And how, and how, in meeting with all the cohort, cohorts, how did the feedback come? How was the feedback?
I met with them for the designing, I met with the six, eight yesterday, met with you people tonight on this, and tomorrow, the ERD,
Rachel.
Rachel and Tricia are gonna go over what we just basically did in brief. And then they have to start massaging it, but, the good news is you have something to begin with, and you still gotta a month of school to start getting it. And then, Tricia is keeping a list of items that a new person would have to come in with regards to assigning duties, based on whatever your staffing is at that time, like typically she signs like somebody for lunch duty.
Yes, yeah.
So, so that the person knows, these are the people available, these are the duties need to be done at that time.
Well, thank you for doing this, because I know this is one of the tasks that we asked you, and you said, what do you want me to do? This was one of the things that we did wanna have some kind of a teaching schedule in place, that can be, can be a basis to work from. And it, it really meets what we wanted for PLCs as well. Any comments, Kev?
Yeah. Yeah, I have three. First one is, I think kudos, I think the schedule does represent what we asked for in regards to making sure there's capacity for teachers to collaborate professionally, so thank you for that, I think that's awesome. All the other logistics and details, I have no idea, so, that's again, that's why I think it's, I don't wanna make, we, we're not voting on it. I do think though, I strongly believe that a final schedule needs to happen before the end of the school year. I don't think this is something, I haven't seen this as a recommendation for the new person coming in, I don't see this as the new person's job. I think by the end of the year, this is finalized, so the teachers can know what to expect in September. For me, that's not a negotiable, the schedule needs to be done. And it's not something sort of like this is a suggestion, it, it, it's gonna be finalized by the end of the year, I think should be our position. The other thing is, I think it would be helpful, just this comes from experience, is that when you look at the collaborative time in the schedule, I see sometimes there's prep time, and then there's sometimes there's PLC time, and the ERDs are PLC time. I think it will be important moving forward, Bob, to have, and I have draft language from other schools, if you're interested in this, is for there to be, and again, this isn't something the board would create, cause I see this as either policy or procedures, but have written document that provides guidelines for expectations around PLCs. In most schools that I work with, PLCs are treated like meetings, and that is not the intent. So for example, the PBL policy spells this out, PLCs can be used for one of four things. They all have in common, PLCs are about collaborating around improving professional practices in one of four areas, curriculum, instruction, assessment, or analysis of student work and data. Nothing else is acceptable during PLC time. The, the general concept of a PLC is teachers should walk out of the PLC better teachers than they walk in. So a typical PLCs in a lot of places, they're team meetings, PLC is not a team meeting. It's not where you plan a field trip, it's not where, well, into those kinds of things, or where you talk about logistics, or, there's a lot of other important things that need to be discussed, and that's fine, that doesn't happen in PLC. PLCs are about professional practices. So I think it'll be helpful moving forward, just to sort of clarify for staff, what an actual, what the expectations of PLC time is used for. And how it differs from prep time, does that make sense?
Very good.
You said you had three items, that's two.
The three, now, the one was kudos on building capacity, the second one was on defining PLC clarity, so that teachers understand their roles and expectations, and the third one was finalize the schedule by the end of the year.
Now.
And again, that's just me speaking, I guess.
I agree that there should be a schedule in place too by the end of the, by the end of the school year. That's not to say that this can't get tweaked some, as, as it needs it, under new leadership, if they wanna tweak it, but this is in place. And probably nobody's gonna tweak it when they first start the school year, until we see how well this particular one flies, correct?
Well, they should tweak it.
Correct, yeah, I see it as the administration's job to have it scheduled by the end of the year for the beginning of the next school year.
Right.
And it's, I would, and part of my reasoning is too, as a new superintendent-principal coming in, I don't think it's there to them to put this on their, on their shoulders, because they don't have enough contextual understanding.
Right.
Now, just, you mentioned about PLC and the purpose, special development. In reflection on the year, I would say that we've made a misstep, and the misstep, and it's actually, it isn't, it's a misstep and it isn't a misstep, because we put kids first in this particular case. Rachel was helping to facilitate PLCs, and as she rolled into the title, one thing, her facilitation of PLCs started to wane. It's no fault of hers, she can only be in one place at a time, and she talked to me, and we said, I said, if a kid's just learning to read, you don't wanna pull the rug out, we need to continue that, so the kid comes first on this, and which is she did. But I, I'm reflecting over the last month or so, I noticed that she and I, we've had less dialogue. of what's taking place during PLC time because you haven't been present all the time. And that's not a fault, she's putting the kids first.
Can I?
Next year, instructional or superintendent principal, whoever, needs to be helping with that facilitation.
And it's understood, I mean, it's understood, a key piece of the PLCs to function in sort of the capacity that I discussed, does require an internal leadership. That's why we talked about having those, the PLCs, there's trained facilitators in each of the PLCs. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My screen froze, so I wasn't sure. It's been calling in and out today. There needs to be time for people to be trained so that they can provide that facilitation so that those conversations are happening. There's a learning curve. It takes time. Absolutely. I think I said earlier on too is, I'm a huge, huge fan of PLCs. However, if they're going to not focus on professional practices, then I'd rather have the teachers with the kids.
True.
Okay, Rachel.
Thanks. I just want to piggyback on Kevin's comment about there being clarity and maybe some clear language from leadership and administration about just exactly what would constitute true PLC time and how that differs from a team meeting. I think going forward, that is, would be hugely valuable to the next people to work with in administration.
Well, he said it's in the policy and he named four things, so as long as that's constantly updated.
Yeah, but merely communicated.
Well, do I need to make a big banner?
If you want.
But I think it's helpful to have an institutional document that just sort of specifies what, you know, other schools that I've worked with, they just, it's a one-page that, these are the PLC guidelines. It provides clarity around roles and responsibilities. It's simple. And that's not to say, other things that teachers, when they get together, talk about aren't important. They are, but they just tend to, over, when it's not defined, those other things are what all that happens and then the professional practice conversations don't happen. So you really need to draw a line in the sand. This time is prep time, this time is PLC time and this time might be, we need to talk about student issues or we need to deal with logistics. That's fine, but two hours at least every week need to be focused up around collaboration around professional practices. PBL will look forward to that.
So Rachel, to go back to what you said, would you think if something was, if there was a procedure of something in place on paper that each cohort had?
I think at the beginning of the year, if, even in going over the schedule, you know.
Go over that.
I'm not saying to be heavy-handed, but just like, okay cohort, so-and-so, let's, to be clear, these meetings on this day are definitely your team items that you have to talk about. However, let's be clear, this is your PLC time. Just as a lot of protocols to help run those meetings. So it's clear at the beginning of the year, I think it would help everybody.
And now refresh my mind, does each cohort right now have a cohort leader? Are they called?
The teacher leader.
The teacher leader, right.
Patty has a... I would really like to push hard for facilitator training. Frankly, I think that I personally could benefit from it.
For the cohort leaders?
Yes. I think it would help a lot with strategies for keeping our meetings from derailing, which happens when you get a bunch of teachers together, you know. It's easy for it to derail and just go in a different way. And I, it would be nice to have those firm strategies in place.
We have set aside some money in the budget under those leadership positions. We haven't defined what those monies are actually going to be used for, except they will be used for cohort leadership, so.
I think we could all benefit from that. I think it would be a lot easier for us, like I said, to just stay on, do what we need to do and, you know.
Okay.
So thanks for all that work on the schedule.
Yes.
And I'm sending right now some sample, one-page documents of like, language that other schools have used to define PLCs.
Okay. Are we all done with the schedule?
Yes.
I'm done.
All right, let's go on to nine, five. Nine, five, now we're on curriculum, science update from staff school visits.
Okay. Try to keep it brief. I know it's getting a little on here. Last Friday, we had incredibly rare, and God bless Tricia and everyone else who was here all day Friday, seven teachers, myself and Mike Corey, visited the Krista, seven teachers, yep. We visited the Krista McAuliffe School, Elementary School, K to five in Concord, New Hampshire. This is an incredible place. First of all, the building is what Patty, about three years old? Not very old.
Absolutely amazing.
It's amazing. So Krista McAuliffe, this actual day was a, they called it their STEM showcase, so it's science, technology, engineering, and math. And Krista McAuliffe is in their second full year of using, also using Project Lead the Way, which is a science curriculum that it's, so the next-gen science standards were established. One thing that I think is a huge plus for PLTW is they are actually based in the next-gen science standards. A lot of current science programs are sort of trying to do a backwards walk and say, oh, look, you know, we hit this standard or that, these launched out of the next-gen science standards, which are the ones that we are using here in Acton. It was a fabulous day. We were all over the place in first grade classrooms, fifth grade classrooms. This person that, see Heather Drolle, their Technology Integration Specialist, organized this day. We weren't the only school there. There were many visitors. I think we tied however for sending the most teachers to one school. We got to see PLTW in action in many different grade levels. And toward the end of the day, we actually got to see first and fifth graders cooperating on a science project together. What was it called, Pat? Chicken, not Chicken Feed?
It was, it was...
It was Awesome Run. Chicken Run. The first graders had designed this bird, I won't even get into it, bird project. They'd used their iPads and made a design on them. And then later in the day, their fifth grade science partners came in to help them actually carry out the final project. It was remarkable to watch. Mike and Patty, please jump in because you were both all over the place there too. Of course, my slideshow went a little crazy. I'm just going to skip a few slides. They have a lot, they're so fortunate at Krista McAuliffe. They have a visiting engineer program, so this is just an example. This is kind of more what I wanted you to see. So what you're seeing on the left are next-gen, some next-gen science standards for first grade around animal adaptation. And this is, to the right, the colorful piece is what? PLTW, they call it a module. So their learning time about animal adaptation is a learning module. There's an introduction, lots of activities, usually software iPad-based information for the kids about animal adaptation that is supplied by PLTW. Then they start into various activities. As you can see, the orange, yellow, and green are activities around how animals adapt. And then it usually has one or two big culminating projects. And I am just going to move through. So this is first graders at Krista McAuliffe. What you're seeing on the right is they're learning about camouflage and they're trying to hide these little butterflies. These are the kids, they're using, these are, this is food and they're trying to design a beak for a bird that can capture the most food and that was kind of interesting to watch. The kids are often going back to technology to support what they're learning or to report out on what they're learning, capturing it in pictures, sharing it with their teacher. Mike, was it Showbie? They were often using a piece of software where the kids could capture what they were doing and then even draw on top of it.
And use verbal notes.
And record about their experiment or their project. More ways, I mean, now they're actually designing it on their iPad and having to report out and write a report about it. I wish I had audio because those kids were really funny. And the culminating piece for this animal adaptation, the kids in partnerships were given areas of the world. And they had to design a shoe for animals that would work where they lived. And then they would challenge people to figure out where their animal was from, depending on how they designed their shoe. Lots of writing and reporting.
One was the ice one.
This is my, oh, my favorite, like, okay, you have to guess what part of the world was their animal from. Yes, if you guessed the rainforest, you were correct. That is where the animal was from. So Project Carrots in the Rain. Yeah, well, I don't think it's supposed to be carrots.
It was a tree trunk.
It was first grade.
I thought it was Australia.
So it was, it was an incredibly beneficial day. It was wonderful to have sent so many people to the same workshop. Tomorrow at our ERD, everybody that went, we haven't really had a chance, we were in various cars, so tomorrow's our chance to get back together and talk about and share about a lot of the things we saw last Friday. Jump in, please.
Yeah, so the school, brand-new, impressive, modern, open concept. What was great to see were the kids across every grade level, the way they traveled through the building, classroom to classroom, their disciplinary, how they acted, their behavior was unified across the building. And we came to find out at the end of the day that they're also a PBIS school. Because we could, we noticed from first grade class to fifth grade class, they utilize the same terminology and same classroom management techniques, which was very impressive for the entire school to just be humming like that silently.
We finally had to ask, I mean, it went on all day long. You wouldn't even see groups of kids coming and you couldn't hear them and then there they were. You had kids working in project groups and successfully, they knew how to do it. They were working really well, cross-grade levels with each other. And then at one point in the afternoon, I did, I finally had to say, I'm just going to ask you, are you a PBIS school? And they said, well, yes, we are. And they haven't even launched it fully yet.
Yeah, they're only on the second year, I think, as well.
Yeah.
Implementation.
And they were, the teacher we asked said, you know, there were things that, they were all agreed they weren't happy with, it's different aspects of the culture and behaviors and that they'd already seen a difference. Do you have questions?
Now, we've already begun this program or you just went to see what...
No, we were actually, you know, we sort of wanted to give as many people who'd be involved a chance to actually see it in person.
Was this the grant you were writing for? Was this something to do with that?
No, this is, no, this is something that we've budgeted for for next year, okay?
Aline was writing for the robots.
Yeah, she is. She is writing another grant, yeah. That's one of her grant choices is to work on robots and things like that to help with the... In fact, that's what she was talking about when she first...
What grades is this going to entail? I mean, this is going to start...
Project Lead the Way has different grade level sections. Their launch program, which is what you'll see in your folder, is for K to five. And then they do have a next level up called Gateway and that's for grades six to eight. And the whole program actually started in, as a high school program and has worked its way back. So there is a full-blown high school program as well. It's backed by MIT, almost every major technical college you could think of, you know, RIT, MIT. A lot of teachers in New England that are in this now have, were trained at Worcester Polytech. Microsoft, I can't, you can read it in your packet, but there's a huge swath of Fortune 500 companies that are backing it. And it's just to truly promote STEM, it's science, technology, and engineering and math.
Are we starting from the beginning then? I mean, from all grades and going...
And every grade, as it moves forward, they start teaching the scientific process and the whole design process. And we saw the same information, same posters, the same language, right from K, right through, we saw five, up to five. And every teacher uses the same science language, teaches the same processes.
And one of the things that I went to also was a teacher who actually takes that process and she tweaked the words a little bit and she uses it in her other curriculum areas.
Right.
So the kids are always thinking and asking and brainstorming and solving problems in the same way they do in science. They do it in their language arts, they do it. And she said it's really helpful to the special ed kids. They really just get it. So, you know, and it's all the same language.
So is this a one-time cost or how does the...
The upfront cost for their first year is, the front-loading costs are the heaviest one-time hit because there are kits that go with the program. Every year there'd be a $750 participation fee.
Seven fifty a year, that's it?
Yeah.
What's the upfront cost?
It's in our budget.
Four thousand dollars we budgeted for. And then that's for the, it's rolling out, but then your PD costs in your first year are...
Your teachers need to be trained, so that's a one-time upfront cost.
We've allocated the, some of the grant money that we have, not Aline, but grant money to cover that. And we had two different approaches in which we were going to pursue potentially. One was where we'd house, hold a training session right here and other schools could come here. Since you visited, while you visited, you found out that now there are four schools in Maine?
Four schools in Maine. I got a call from Kyle Rhodes, or, you know, because Wyndham's probably going to dump on me.
But we've chatted since and because of some issues, PLTW's growing pretty fast across nations and so having, I'll say, trainers that have been trained for a long time come here, it became very difficult because we're late to the game, this is why we're planning summer PD. So what the thought was, do you want to summarize what the thought is now?
Their normal way of training is to have two, maybe three teachers from your school go to a nearby college and luckily this year they're opening it up at New Hampshire Technical, which is in Concord. Two to three teachers go away for the real heavy-duty four-day training. And then they in turn come back and start the staff off initially with an eight-hour training. The program supports each teacher because there's a one-hour, almost a tutorial video. Say that animal adaptation module, before that first grade teacher, as she's getting that module ready to teach, they provide her with a one-hour, here's everything you need to know. Like, she can just plug into their website and teachers, and go through a one-hour training for that actual module. And they have one for each grade level for each.
Talked about August.
There were already PD, that's hard to say, PD days set aside in August on the 22nd, starting on the 22nd. Hope, you know, we had hoped that we could get every teacher trained to the maximum level. Instead, it looks like we could use that time so that the few teachers who go get the full-blown training could use, we have to decide still, maybe that week, you know, part of that week or let's come back and train the other teachers.
And so that they basically get a full understanding of all the units throughout the year upfront, so you don't have to riddle them in during the year, but then you could support them again throughout the year. But, and more importantly, they all do it as a team. They do it as a collective, as a group. Because in bigger schools, you might have four first aid teachers or something, they could work together. You can't do that here, so you need to bridge. Plus you might be moved in the future, teachers move back and forth, like, this year's moving back. And I don't know if Patty wanted to add anything else because she was there.
So the cost for all of this is already included in next year's budget? Including this heavy-duty training and the week training is already in it?
Most of the training will be done this summer, the end of this year. Most of it will be covered either by the Title II grant, what we have in our operating currently this year, still left for professional development and training. So we've already crunched all the numbers to make sure we got, you know, and then if we really need to, we still have the rural grant to work with if we, you know, need a little bit of extra, so.
And, you know, financially, which she always tries to exhaust those things, usually lose it, grant things, so.
That sounds interesting. Well, David, do you want to say something?
Yeah, this sounds, you know, really promising. Like, my question is, and I've had the question a few times, yeah... yeah, wouldn't it be prudent to look at other programs as well to compare it to? And kind of, uh, you know, look at the pros and cons. I mean, there's a lot of really interesting sponsored programs out there. Kevin, I don't know how much you're involved in science, but isn't, doesn't West Ed endorse STEM scopes?
Uh, I don't know. There, we, there, we have a huge STEM.
Yeah, I, I've just been reading, I'm, I'm no expert on that.
I can look into that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm no expert on, on any of them, but, I mean, it, it just seems like it would be prudent to really, I think it's, it's always energizing and it's always great to, to get out of the walls here. I think it's awesome. And we need to do more and more of it. I just think it would be prudent to look at, you know, comparable programs.
But the money's already been.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the status of that.
I guess, I, I, I think the only, my only thought was, you know, is, are we putting another load for learning something new on the staff when they're working on?
They have to do science, so.
When they're, I know they have to do science, but I mean, when they, when they're already working on.
Then they're gonna have to create?
Professional learn.
Science.
Again, Patty, I need to get some. The, the thing with these modules is that everything is right there that we need. Right now, I have to go and look for everything I need to cover these standards and hope that my interpretation is correct. And as far as looking at other programs go, the only problem with that is that we're coming up on the end of the year. I like this program. Uh, and I, it's all-inclusive, there's so much support to it, that the thought of not doing it is frustrating because then it means more researching, more delay, more, you know. If nobody else was using it, I'd say, ooh. But I mean.
So, what, did we take somebody from each grade level? How do we do, how do we work that out?
With the exception of Riley McCabe, because she was very, very ill. We had every grade teacher who has to teach science in some manner from K to five. Cause we were going to that K to five school when we got to see the gamut of.
Um, this school is piloting this program as well, um, as PBIS. And, uh, when we asked them what they're doing, they were using this as their, wasn't it their, their Friday activity, their Friday? And they were doing their regular science curriculum during the week.
They had additional, they had some additional, because this school was so steeped in science. They just did a lot of other things, like they had that coding club for girls, just because they wanted to. Because there's so much extra science that they do.
I was under the impression that they had their standard science curriculum and this was their Friday piloting?
No, 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 no.
I was just wondering.
They do, like, they do a lot of fun, they call it Fun Friday. They do a lot of Fun Friday science, just for fun, of interest.
Do you have a comment about the cross-standards and other content areas and how it provides the, the documentation?
That was, that was the other piece, I'm glad you brought that up. The, we looked at, Rachel got us the standards from, um, this program so, so that we could look at them when we were doing our, our unit design, our scope and sequence. And we were able to actually move things around. This would be helpful with unit design, Kevin, because it has the science standards, it also has the math standards that go with it and the language arts standards that go with it. So Norma and I looked at it for first grade and we actually moved a few things around on our trimester, um, charts so that we could then be more, um, accurate in our, in our unit groupings. So, I mean, it, it keeps, it helps that unit design. I mean, that's a goal for us too, is to get that scoped, scoped sequence down and, you know. I don't feel like, and, and I'm doing Lucy Hawkins and I'm doing Math in Focus and I'm doing Mastery Connect with everybody else. And I don't feel like this would be a problem at all. I mean, the thing is, with this, it's four 10-hour modules. And they said that it doesn't build in time for those teachable moments, that extra stuff that always comes up. But I mean, 10 hours for a module, that's 40 hours of science, which leaves you plenty of time to add in all kinds of other things. Plus, they said the way the modules are designed, you can do them on a weekly basis, you can do your lessons that way. Or, like, they said one, one group decided two days before Thanksgiving, everybody was all whatever anyway. So they just crunched a module in two days there and said, forget everything else, we're just gonna do science for two days. And they just really, you know, made it all about that module and that 10 hours. And so I like the flexibility of that too.
And it all sounds great, but what, still comparatively, what tells you that is the one, if you have nothing to compare it to? And that's my, I guess that's my only point. I don't wanna belabor the point, but that's, yeah, I know, but I think, I mean, I just.
Well, and it may not fit for six, seven, and eight. It sounds really good for K five, you know what I mean? I don't know, because you didn't get to see six, seven, and eight.
We didn't get to see six, seven, and eight there.
It originally started in the CTE, in the career, you know, vocational, and then went to high school, then went to middle school, and then all the material, then in that order. So there are module structures all the way through, if school were to want to go that route, or district, or whatever.
Um, I guess.
For the car, but this, this part of the, we're, sorry.
I, yeah.
This is just an update, right? So, I mean, I, I, I appreciate the update. It sounds like folks went to visit something. I had, uh, that, I, I'm hearing a lot of excitement from the, the folks that went and visited. So here's some questions out there too, but, um, I appreciate the update. And it sounds like too, it's, there's a plan moving forward, money's been budgeted and it doesn't seem like a prohibitive amount of money either. Some, some, a lot of programs out there for things like this cost a heck of a lot more, so.
The continuing, uh, cost of it would be the 750 annual participation fee. And Heather at Concord told me the sort of refill cost for the kits, at least for launch, would run about $250 to $300, like, for the year.
Except, there are all kinds of really easy ways too, that they told us that you can get around having to buy their refill things. Because some of the stuff, you just go to the dollar store and pick up like cotton balls and things like that, high payers and, get, and all kinds of recycled stuff, so that there are things in those kits that we wouldn't have to pay to replace.
I guess to sum up, it gives you the train, absolutely solid training upfront, but also continuous support all year long. They, if you have a question, they would respond to you. I think Bob found out that day. If you have a question for PLTW, they respond to you within half an hour.
That's good.
Yeah. It, your lesson plans are solid, they're there, they're supported and integrated into technology.
Pre and post-formative and summative.
They give you all the assessments that you could think of, are built into your teacher website that you get into for each module that you need to teach. It is incredibly hands-on and the kids that we all saw were learning by having a blast as well. That's about it.
Thanks, everybody.
All set on that, I guess?
We'd like to add one more thing to curriculum. Would you touch on, um, the PD that's planned for, for Math in Focus and also for staff to have time in the summer to work on their scope and sequence? Just so they realize, we've allocated a significant. Yeah, we didn't get cushions. Where's the cushions? We've allocated a significant portion of.
I've been staring at them.
You know?
It's all right, I can't move now anyway.
No, you have to get up to net. Come on now.
No, good. Yeah, because we're not done yet.
There you go, all set.
It's not your fault.
Oh, you want some?
Where's the incentive to leave?
That ship has sailed. PD, go ahead, Rachel.
The staff was given the opportunity to apply for.
He's got a good share right there.
Summer PD hours to work, um, to further their cohorts' work on our school scope and sequence. Maybe the, if they're beyond that, on unit design for their cohorts. Two teachers are going to be spending some PD hours inputting into Mastery Connect common math assessments from Math in Focus that everybody can access. And I wish I could help you to understand how helpful that will be for people, that they don't have to create something and input it into Mastery Connect time and again on their own to match up with Math in Focus. They're gonna spend a ton of time this summer just creating the assessments that match. So a teacher only has to go in there and pull it up and not have to put it in her, his or herself.
And, and I'm just reiterate, and others have additional time, uh, they're spending a significant amount of money on this in the summer, just letting you know. Approaching $9,000. But it has to be done. I just wanna talk to Dave Cody's point that I don't think we're ruling out that we can't look at other things.
Shh, shh. What are you doing?
Hey, you're making a lot of noise there. You know what I mean? I don't think it rules out looking at other, um, science programs, especially six, seven, and eight. I'm just saying, if, you know, like STEM scopes or something works better at that level, I don't think you shouldn't look at it.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, I was looking at the K five, that was, my point is just simple, that if you, we talk about comparative data all the time. If you look at one program, how do you have comparative data? If you looked at two or three or four, then you have comparative data.
I have to say, as far as precedent, I can't remember us looking at three or four writing programs. We, we found Lucy Hawkins, many, many, many people in our area were supporting it. It had everything we were looking for, thinking about, and we used it, so.
Right, and that's good for now. And then two years from now, it'll be something else that's great and wonderful. I'm just saying, you know, things change every time.
We also have a fair share of programs that were done that way that ended up collecting dust too. So, I mean, we've seen the whole gamut. We've seen many of them work, just like Rachel's talking, I agree 100% with her. But also, we have seen our fair share of ones that just, oh, yeah, this is it, let's go for it, and they didn't work. So I'm just looking at, I look at it as hedging a bet, hedging your bet, so to speak.
Is this something that could be, could be, uh, looked at to continue through grade six, seven, and eight?
I, I think that's for future discussions at this point.
There's nothing doing, I don't know.
There, they have their gateway, they, they call this K five program their launch program.
Mm-hmm.
They have a six, seven, and eight program they call Gateway, to be like the next step. That, that could be something for future discussion.
Math in Focus is an example. You were K five and rolled to six, but that's as far as it's gonna go. So, you know.
Anybody else?
No.
We done with nine, five?
Yep.
Nine, six, teacher renewals.
You're the only one with the sheet.
Yeah. Okay, so we're looking to, uh, renew contracts for teachers, probationary teachers? And, uh.
You don't have one, Mary. There's only one sheet. Yeah, it was in the superintendent report.
No.
Okay, but she has it, there's motion.
Okay, all right. So we're looking for, um, probationary one to probationary two, moving from one year to two years, for McCabe, Gildar, Cole, Peppin, and Johansson.
I'll make a nomination to move them from probationary to, for second year.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we moved those up to second-year probationary. All those in favor? I see it, Kevin. And then, uh, moving from probationary two years to probationary three year would be Ryan Martin.
I'll make a motion to move him from second-year probationary to third year.
Mary Jeanette. All those in favor? I vote. And the final one is moving from probationary three to continuing contract for Travis Corcoran.
To who, for who?
Travis.
Music.
Music.
He's here that long? This is to a continuing contract. I'll motion that we move Travis Corcoran to, um, what is it called? Continuing. Continuing contract.
Let's look at that. All those in favor? Five and O. Okay. I didn't write these down.
She, she's got, she's got the same sheet.
Okay, uh, update on superintendent's, uh, principal search. I asked to have this, uh, added to the, to the agenda. I just wanted to let you know that we have received 16 applications for the position. And the board right now is in the process of going through all these applications and looking at them, to try to narrow it down to ones that need to be, that we want, we feel we should interview. Um, also, pretty much got a, uh, an interview committee put together. Just have to touch base with a couple of other people, so, um, we're looking good and we're hoping to start interviews before the, by the end of this month. And probably meeting as a committee before that. Definitely meeting as a committee before that. Anybody, any comments? All set? Anybody else wanna say anything about that? No?
No, I just wanna say that the applications are complete. These are not just, oh, some don't have this, some don't have that information. These are completed with every documentation you could imagine. If you see how many pages. So we got it all.
Yeah. Definitely, uh, got our money's worth from MSMA.
Yes.
Okay, article, uh, number nine, eight. And for this one, we need to.
See the articles.
See the articles. I've, I can read it to you, I've got it here.
Now, what is town meeting first?
Can you put it up on the board at least?
It's not on the.
She, she actually could. She's got from her phone to.
Yeah, it's an iPhone, you can connect to it.
Really?
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, my goodness, I'm gonna learn something exciting here tonight.
You can even print to a paper.
From the bottom?
Can you touch the bottom of the screen? All right, there we go.
Yeah.
Airplane.
Yeah.
Up on airplanes?
I'll look up here.
And find the library. And click the Euro button.
This one?
Mm-hmm. And look on the screen. Click up on the board and type in that number.
This is too much. Hope she didn't have anything personal on there.
Nothing serious.
All right, then you can hit done.
Okay.
And you can slide it down. And there you go.
And there are articles, okay.
You might have to pinch and zoom or.
It's a draft.
You can flip it sideways too.
All right. Okay, more article. Fifty-five. That's the, that's the first one. And the article is, "To see if the town of Acton will authorize to transfer funds up to the amount of $65,000 from schools' undesigned funds to Article II Regular Instruction to cover the expense of a foreign language teaching position." So what I need is a, a motion from a school committee member, and we need to vote on this article so that we can give it to Jen.
Can you read the beginning again?
"To see if the town of Acton will authorize to transfer funds up to the amount of $65,000 from the schools' undesigned funds to Article II Regular Instruction to cover the expense of a foreign language teaching position."
Do we need the language to say transfer on expand or we don't need the expand language?
No, if you put it in Article II, then that, then. That tells you where it's going and it's being suspended.
So what we need is, the school committee recommends.
Sixty-five thousand.
To.
Up to amount, sixty-five thousand. Is it, is it?
Yes. Approve the article.
Okay, yeah, right. Approve the article as written.
School committee recommends to approve the article as. School committee recommends to approve the article as written.
That's what Jeanette said.
Right?
Do you want to correct your language mechanics or you're not worried about it? It's a possessive, schools unzit should be, schools should have an apostrophe.
She can fix that, this is a draft.
Okay.
Yep.
No, sorry.
No, it's a good catch.
The school didn't write it, it's okay. Is it or not? I have to ask you this question, I know you probably don't know the end of the story, but is this the last articles of the warrant?
You mean this number?
Yeah.
I would say yes. There's a couple more.
Yeah, there are, oh, a lot.
We're pretty close to the end, yeah. Come early, stay late, Jeanette.
Bring a pillow.
Just wondering.
So I need a motion.
No, Jeanette motioned.
What, what'd you say?
What you said.
Accept Article 55 as written.
To, to adopt.
Fifty five is written.
Fifty five as written, approve 55 as written.
With the apostrophe.
Can you second?
I will second it.
Seconded by Amanda, all those in favor?
Not in favor?
No, for, it looks like for, for.
I'm not in favor.
Oh, yeah, Amanda's not in favor.
Are you voting, Kevin?
He voted and voted.
Yeah, my thumbs up.
Four and one.
Yep.
Opposed?
I said opposed.
Okay.
Can you tell me why?
Okay, so.
I don't like the process, that's all.
The process.
No, I'd rather figure out how we would get a foreign language teacher here, what grades, and have a big discussion than just do that.
But we don't have to spend the money. If we have it, then we can go on with what we need to do, we don't have to. No.
Article 57, this is.
Fifty six?
No, Article 56, this is our other article. To see if the town of Acton will authorize a transfer of excess funds from the schools' undesigned fund balance to offset taxes contingent on the school department's fund balance policy and there being a surplus at the end of the fiscal year.
I'll make a motion to accept the article as written. Second?
Mary and Amanda, all those in favor?
Kevin?
Okay. All right, that's all we have on that warrant to worry about.
Two articles. Two articles.
You know, the town, you know, and our.
Oh, yeah.
We appropriated $25,000 to fix up, we need to see what the heck we spent.
Oh, yeah.
Nine point nine.
Trish.
Trish, can you give us a little update on OM, please?
Of course I will.
Of course you can, on funds.
The trip, the trip is costing about $10,000. And, sorry, I just got tired of sitting.
Now, how much was raised?
We can relate to that.
They had quite a bit already.
They had $4,000 in the account and parents paid for the trip itself upfront. And now they're using the money that they're raising to pay the parents back and replenish the funds. So they have between fundraising through GoFundMe, Shower with Flowers, Candy Sales, Spaghetti Dinner. Coming up on the 14th, this Saturday, will be the variety show, they'll have raffles that'll go towards it. They have earned back $3,000. So they've, they've fundraised $3,000 additional dollars. So they're now replacing the money to the parents and continuing funding. The goal is to.
So they've raised about, they have above $7,000.
They have $7,000.
And does that include the thousand, the school committee?
She did not, that was not mentioned here, so I don't know that that's included. In the total at this point.
Yeah, we approved it last week, Kim might know that.
So we'll have to double check on that. So the goal is to continue the fundraising, because of course they get very short notice from winning to going. So there's a lot of upfront cost and then do the same for next year's team and have the money replenished for the same type of situation, which for a small school in Acton has had many of these last minute win and go things. So I had a lot of parents and, and a few community members, as well as school members, donate to the spaghetti dinner even though they weren't going, you know. I had somebody who missed it and, you know, gave 20 bucks and said, you know, make sure it goes to it. So people, the, the money's trickling in in different ways. So they, they are definitely going to be all set. Like I said, the biggest goal will be to make sure they replenish the money after the, you know.
And what was the date of that again, the date of the trip?
Uh, 24th?
Twenty fifth to 28th.
Twenty fifth to 28th. And they have asked to be on the agenda for the June meeting so that they can make a report to us and fill us in on, on their experiences out there, so.
That's good.
Sure we get that, yeah.
Maybe they could even show, um, another videotape, the performance, and it's only about five, six minutes long, so maybe we can even see it.
Definitely.
Sounds good.
No, I just made my daughter mad at me.
Are you going, Kevin?
Are you going?
No, no.
No, Jesse's going.
Jesse's going?
Yep.
Okay. I will look now for a motion to move into executive session as per MRSA 4056A personnel.
All, so moved, yes, so moved.
Second?
Second.
We're all asleep.
All in favor? Okay.